Hello, everyone. Good evening. And welcome to the Select Board meeting tonight, Tuesday, March 19th. And it is 7:13 PM. A motion to open the meeting.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Roll call. Mr. Gito.
Here.
Mr. McChrisky?
Here.
Vice Chair Cavie?
Here.
Mr. Carrara?
Here.
And I am here. I ask all to stand if you are able to salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands by nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extends the governor's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A, Section 20, until March 31st, 2025, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google meets. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting. If the live broadcast or livestreaming is unsuccessful, times are approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. And with that said, item number three, swearing-in ceremony of a quill therapy dog will be tabled into a future meeting, time to be determined. So we'll just start right out with item number two, which is the swearing-in of Lieutenant Nate Derby and Sergeant Tom Tedesco. Item Donna McNamara.
Oh, hi.
That's okay.
I don't.
Oh, see, I have mine. Hello, Chief McNamara. Welcome.
Good evening. Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the board and to the town manager for the opportunity to share with Thomas Stotan the promotions of our two new members to rank, Thomas Tedesco to the rank of sergeant and Nathaniel Derby to the rank of lieutenant. It is with great pleasure we are here today to celebrate these two promotions. Welcome to family and friends and fellow officers of the Stotan Police Department that are here this evening to show support for these two gentlemen. I'd like to recognize the efforts of all members of our department, both sworn and civilian, in the hard work and dedication that they provide to our town each and every day at this time. Tonight, we celebrate the accomplishments and dedication and hard work that is continuously displayed by both promotional candidates this evening during their careers with the Stotan Police Department. I'd like to begin with the first promotion, which is Thomas Tedesco to the rank of sergeant. As he walks up, I'm going to talk a little bit about what Tom has done during his career. He is accompanied by his son. So as we see here today, that's his son named Thomas as well. Sergeant Tedesco has taken on the responsibility and trusted to him with the well-being of officers. He will supervise within the Stotan Police Department and the trust of the Stotan community during any given shift that he will supervise. The incredible responsibility bestowed on all police officers begins with their first oath of office. And Tom Tedesco took his first oath of office when he graduated the police academy in 2018. That first oath of office was after graduating from the MBTA Academy. Sergeant Tedesco has shown many attributes over his career in the last few years, some of which are compassion, dedication, empathy, extremely hard worker during his career as a member of our department. He's continuously challenged himself, not only in his duties as a police officer, but also in striving to continue to gain knowledge and training throughout his career. He became a first responder and a CPR instructor, as well as a field training officer, giving him positive opportunities on numerous occasions to impact the professional police officers that we have in our department by training our in-house veteran officers. Those skills and that knowledge he has bestowed on our staff over the last few years. Sergeant Tedesco has shown from the first day he became a police officer in our department that he is committed not only to his assignments, but also committed to the fellow officers within our department. Prior to being hired in Stotan, Tom began serving our country as a member of the U.S. Army and then the Mass Army National Guard. During his military service, he has also received numerous commendations. While serving the Stotan community, Sergeant Tedesco has continued to display outstanding work, which has been recognized by not only citizens of our community with letters of appreciation, but letters of outstanding work from other employees within the town, including school department employees, members of the fire department, also his own peers and command staff within the Stotan Police Department. He has received a life-saving award for CPR and an AED deployment, which brought a 66-year-old resident back to life, a meritorious unit commendation for the arrest of a B&amp;E suspect on the midnight shift, a meritorious unit award for assisting the city of Brockton during civil unrest in 2020, as well as a commendation for his tenacious efforts to track the cellphone of a young lady who wanted to end her own life. Thanks to his efforts, the young lady was located in Rhode Island, suffering from an apparent overdose, and she was transported to the hospital. These are just some of the examples of what Thomas Tedesco has displayed during his career as a patrol officer for the town of Stotan. I have no doubt that he will take on this new challenge as a sergeant within our department with great enthusiasm, pride, empathy, professionalism, and dedication to our town. I'd like to introduce Town Clerk Stephanie Carrara to administer the oath of office.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands by nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will bear true faith and allegiance to and will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of the Mass. I will obey and be bound by such rules and regulations as are now, what may be established by the town of Stotan and its police department. I, Thomas Tedesco, do solemnly swear that I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will uphold the Constitution, my community, and the Stotan Police Department. So help me God. I, Thomas Tedesco, hereby accept the position of police sergeant for the town of Stotan. Congratulations.
She would pin his badge on his shirt. For our next promotion this evening, to the rank of lieutenant, Nathaniel Derby. Lieutenant Derby first took on the responsibility and trusted him as a patrol sergeant back in 2018 for the town of Stotan. Lieutenant Derby is an officer of great character who has shown his commitment to our department and the community during the years of his service. He began his career of public service with the U.S. Coast Guard, holding numerous assignments, one of which was the law enforcement division chief of Boston in Boston from 2003 to 2007. He was assigned to the Alameda, California as a counter-drug officer in the U.S. Coast Guard as well. In 2008, Lieutenant Derby was hired initially as a police officer for the town of Wellesley and attended the MBTA Academy in 2009. While with the Wellesley Police Department, Lieutenant Derby received numerous commendations for his dedication to drug enforcement and also as a drug recognition expert. Lieutenant Derby has been extremely committed to his training, but more importantly, he has been extremely dedicated and committed to providing the highest level of training to our department during his assignment as a supervisor of training. Lieutenant Derby has been elevated to become an instructor trainer for the MPTC in firearms. He's conducted training for our department, as well as trained outside agencies in TASER, firearms, semmunitions, as well as de-escalation tactics. He's an instructor as well in an active attack integrated response instructor. Lieutenant Derby has been awarded a letter of merit in 2010, a lifesaving award in 2017 for CPR and the deployment of an AED, which resuscitated an individual suffering from cardiac arrest, as well as received the Public Service Award in 2017. Since 2016, Lieutenant Derby and his family spearheaded a toy drive, which has provided thousands of toys and clothing for children each year during the holiday season of the last few years for our town. This initiative, which began personally as a family effort, has blossomed to a department-wide effort each year and a source of great pride for our department to help those in need, especially during the holiday season. Lieutenant Derby has also received a meritorious unit award in 2018 and a meritorious service award in 2020. I'd introduce Town Clerk Stephanie Carrara for the administration of the oath of office.
I, Derby, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and passionately discharge the form of all the duties incumbent upon me as a police lieutenant for the town of Stotan, Massachusetts. I will bear true faith and allegiance to and will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I will obey and be bound by such rules and regulations as are now, or may be established by the town of Stotan and its police department. I, Derby, do solemnly swear that I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will uphold the Constitution, my community, and the Stotan Police Department. So help me God. I, Derby, hereby accept the position of police lieutenant for the town of Stotan. Congratulations.
And pinning him this evening will be his wife, Jennifer. Also in attendance are his daughters Ella, Morgan, and Samantha. If we could take a moment, we can take some pictures.
Yes, we will suspend the Select Board meeting for 10 minutes for photo ops. Thank you. We'll reconvene the Select Board meeting tonight at 7:38 PM. We'll start with item number four. Page Street County discontinuous acceptance of related easements indemnification agreement. Votes may be taken. Tom Calder will take the lead on this discussion.
Madam Chair, I'm going to refer this question to Town Council Brian Winter with the help of the Assistant Town Manager.
Yes.
To Brian Winter.
Yes, Mr. Winter and Mr. Tisdale.
How's everybody doing?
Doing great.
You hear me?
How are you? You want to test that a little?
Is it working?
Yes, it is.
I literally got to put my mouth on it. Okay. So tonight, we're in front of you for the Page Street, the final part, the Page Street discontinuance. As you know, town meeting voted the discontinuance of that right-of-way. Your board voted to dis— nope.
Just one minute, Mr. Tisdale. Dolores, are you able to hear us? I see your hand was raised. You're on mute now, but are you all set? Let's continue on. Sorry for the interruption, Mr. Tisdale.
That's okay. Mark Tisdale, Assistant Town Manager. Just to recap what I just said, just the history of this project, as you know, town meeting voted to discontinue this Page Street right-of-way. Your Select Board voted to also discontinue it. And then, since it was a county right-of-way, it had to go to the county commissioners, Norfolk County Commissioners, to also vote discontinuance of that right-of-way. Once the right-of-way was gone, what is a condition of the approval from the Norfolk County Commissioners was to establish three easements for the purposes of utilities, access, and things of that nature, in case if there's ever a development on this piece of property and there's an unknown water line or something like that, the town has access in that area. So there's three easements of that nature. They're denoted as A, B, and C on this plan. They follow essentially where the right-of-way used to be. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Oh, Attorney Winter, did you have any comments in this regard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, hold on one second. Am I getting picked up?
Yeah.
Okay, terrific. No, I just wanted to add that everything Mr. Tisdale said is accurate. And I wanted to note that he and I have worked together on this throughout the process. We reviewed the plans. We reviewed the easement language. We've been in communication, not only with the county and Mr. Higgins, but with Mr. Edwards' representatives. And so this is, for all intents and purposes, kind of pro forma. This is the last stage of a very long and complicated process, and so I don't want to go into the weeds here, but this is one of the requirements of the county discontinuance vote. So it's not really consummated until we sign off on this, for all the reasons that Mr. Tisdale just stated. And so this is very routine, if you will. I will note also, on the agenda, at my suggestion, there was an indemnification agreement that was referenced in there. That's actually not ready. I thought it would be ready for today. We only have it in draft form. I have a scheduled conference call tomorrow morning with everybody to finalize that. So I'll ask that maybe we put that on for a future meeting. But the easements are ready to be executed tonight.
Thank you very much, Attorney Winter. Any questions from the board? Mr. Carrara.
Through you, Madam Chairman, to Attorney Winter. Brian, is that the language that I asked for, holding us harmless?
So it isn't. It's a separate document, Selectman Carrara. The one that you are referencing, we've already revised, and that's part of the other side related to the Stotan Logistics Center material. So that has been done. It's just not part of this.
Thank you.
So are there any other questions? I'm looking to the left. I see Mr. McChrisky, and then I'll ask each individual board member, Gito, and then Vice Chair Cavie, if they have questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not a question, but a statement. We've been interacting quite a bit in the last couple of years with the Norfolk County administration and on development that's bringing, you know, new taxes into this town. And I'd be remiss that if I did not mention my thanks. I sit on the advisory board for Norfolk County and have been interacting with the leadership of Commissioner Dick Stady, the chairman, Joseph Shea, and Peter Collins. All commissioners have worked with the town of Stotan to expedite this to the best of their ability and work with us, you know, helping us with these discontinuances, which are helping us make, in a lot of areas, land that was sitting vacant and turning it into tax-producing property. And just the logistic park alone is going to bring $2.3 to $2.7 million in new revenue to the town of Stotan. So I just want to make sure that when we're talking about this, that we do thank them for the efforts that they've taken on behalf of the town of Stotan. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McChrisky. Any other comments? Are we ready to vote on the discontinuance? Motion?
Motion to accept the document drawn up by Attorney Winter for the discontinuance of this.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Unanimous decision.
Go ahead.
Yes, Attorney Winter.
May I respectfully request that the board consider authorizing you to sign them? Just because the way they were set up by the county and all the other parties, they were set up for the chair's signature, so there aren't signature blocks for the entire board, just for the chair.
What's the wish of the board?
Discretion, of course.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McChrisky.
Make a motion that the board authorize the chair to sign the documents?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale, and thank you, Attorney Winter. Moving right along to item number five, that's the continuation of a public hearing, Class II license application. Vice Chair Cavie, would you care to take the lead on that?
Sure, Madam Chair. One second. Here we are. I think I'm going to start moving to paper. I had it right in front of me, but then I blew past it, looking for something else. Here it is. I found it. I got it. I got it. So this is a notice of hearing, Town of Stotan Notice of Hearing. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on February 20th, 2024, at 7:40 PM to consider the application of Platinum Sales LLC for a Class II, application of Platinum Sales LLC for a Class II license located at 1874 Washington Street, Stotan, Massachusetts, 02072. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stotan, Massachusetts, and via Google meets. It may be broadcast via Stotan Media Access Television and livestream. Google meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to gparra@stotan-ma.gov by 4:00 PM the day of the meeting, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, Select Board acting as the local licensing authority. The application has been reviewed by town staff. We have the following comments for our use. The fire approved. Building approved. This is an existing nonconforming use. Treasury Office, no objections. Water Department, no objections. The police offer the following, no objections. If approved, applicant should be advised of the following traffic restrictions. Customers not be permitted to park in the breakdown lane. No display of promotions or vehicles for sale. Obstruct the view of traffic for customer ingress and egress. The board has restricted the number of vehicles excluding customers that are in the lot at one time. If permissible, we ask that restrictions be considered of licensure. And then the Board of Health, no issues identified, and they have some notes on that.
Yes, asking the board for their wish to open, a motion to open the hearing.
So made. To continue the—
To continue the motion, to continue the hearing. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you. So we have our guests today. Can you please introduce yourselves?
Good evening. My name is Honor Tekin. I'm the owner of Platinum Car Sales.
Hello, nice seeing you again.
Nice to see you again.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Calder.
May I give a brief introduction as to what brings us to the second part of the hearing?
Yes, please, Mr. Calder.
Madam Chair, as you and the members recall, we met with the applicant once before, and it became very clear, I think to all, that this applicant wishes to do everything by the numbers, to comply completely with all the requirements of the town of Stotan. But he shares a lot with two other tenants unrelated to his business, and there were many questions about the property that he couldn't and appropriately shouldn't have answered because they were pertaining to other properties that may or may not be in compliance. So the board, as you recall, asked myself and Jack and Matt to go out and inspect the property so we could separate perception from reality. And the three of us did just that. And Jack and Matt are here to report on their findings, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Calder. Jack, yes.
I thought Tom was going to say what we found. So basically, what it came down to is the issues that were coming up were not his. They were the other tenants. Matt went in and found there was barrels that shouldn't be there. There was a few other things that had to do with the other tenants, that one of them is never there during the day, period, but it had nothing to do with him. So I stand by what I wrote before, that it's an existing nonconforming use. The issues in the building are the other tenants. That's it.
Good evening. Matt Reposa, Code Enforcement Manager. We went out to 1873 Washington, and we looked around. We took into consideration the things that police had suggested with the parking in the breakdown lane, and also making sure there weren't vehicles in the way to obstruct the view. Both of those things have been addressed. Board of Health, the site was previously in noncompliance septic-wise, and it's now under town sewer. As far as Select Board, previous discussed items, there were concerns about the number of bays at the location. Mr. Tekin only has one bay, and that's used for detailing only. He doesn't fix anything there. We also previously discussed was the parking in the wetlands and parking out front. Both of those have been addressed. And the number of cars permitted in that specific lot is 47. As of today, he had 45. Discussions also took place about the 55-gallon drums that were there, and those don't belong to him. I went out there today, and I made sure that the people who are responsible do write on them and take care of emptying them. I've been in touch with the owner of the actual property, and it does look a lot better. He's working hard with the people who are next to Mr. Tekin, and they've made some progress. There's still some more work to do, but they're at least giving it a shot. So, you know, with multiple visits, I think all the problems have been resolved.
Thank you very much. I'll turn to my fellow board members and ask, do they have any questions for the owner or for our guest? I see Mr. Gito's light is green.
Thank you. I don't have any questions about the applicant's lot or part of the lot. Are the other lots, are the other businesses in compliance?
Yes, for the most part. Some unregistered vehicles are a concern of mine, but there's a couple of less since last week. So he is working on it. I told him I gave him another week, and then he's going to get a phone call again, and we'll send out some more letters.
So that should make the whole property better?
Better, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Are there any other questions? Would there be none?
Yeah, we've asked the public.
Are there any questions from our citizens? I'm looking out in the audience.
Motion to close the hearing, Madam Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Motion to grant the application with all of the concerns answered by the Building Department and Zoning Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You abstain, Mr.?
No. I'm going to be voting no.
You're voting no. Okay. And I'm voting yes. Congratulations. Motion passed. Thank you very much.
Is that four to one?
Yes. On our agenda next, we have item number six, which is the department head mid-year presentations, and we'll start with the assessors department. Please step forward, state your name and department that you lead.
Trish Fropshire.
Well, hello there, and welcome.
I have assessing and IT, but I guess we're doing assessing first. So we were told we have five minutes. I'll be brief, but let me know if you have any questions. Sure. I don't want to put my mouth on it because somebody already did that. That was a bad joke. I'm sorry. He was just being silly. He was just being silly.
If you wanted to talk about IT while you're talking about assessors, then that's okay. We'll just take it.
Okay, sure, whatever. I didn't want to go out of order.
Sounds good. I didn't have my microphone on.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So first of all, I would say we stabilized the assessing department. As you know, we had a department head who left in assessing, and Tom had asked me to go in and assist down there. So I would say that was an accomplishment. The department worked really hard at trying to bring everything together. We developed and documented operating procedures. We have, you know, documentation now for everything we do. We had a major MUNIS upgrade and AssessPro upgrade, so things were also done differently. Billing, we now outsourced the billing because we really felt that that was important after, you know, we had a little glitch there. We worked on the growth and billable revenue, so we make sure that, you know, no growth was seeping through the cracks. So I'd say that was our mid-year accomplishments. And if I'm going too fast, let me know. I get nervous when I come up here. Okay, thank you. For goals, I'm going to stick within that five minutes, Tom. We are recruiting an assessor, hopefully, as we speak. That's, you know, posted. I find it to be really important that we maintain the data accuracy for our real estate and personal property, I mean, real estate and personal property. I think we've gone through quite a bit of the real estate, but really need to get a handle on the personal property, even though we retain a third-party vendor to assist with that. The staff is going to be taking the 200-series classes, so I think it's really important that we all have an opportunity to learn and to cross-train in educating everybody on where they would like to be, and it only brings the department up further. So that's my... Thanks, Brian. Brian's like smiling not at his head. Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Yes, I... Oh, go ahead, Vice Chair Cavey.
I don't have any questions, but I know that the Assessor's Office has had a number of challenges they've had to deal with over the last couple of years through no one's fault. It's just, you know, sort of some unique obstacles that our department's faced. And I think that the people in the department have done a fabulous job dealing with that. And I just want to thank you for all that you've done to get that office on track. And it's really been fabulous, and I'm just, I'm really impressed by it, and I just want to thank you for all the work you've done.
Thank you. It's a great staff, and we couldn't do it, you know, without Deborah. Deborah and, you know, we have some assistance going on there because it's new for me, but thank you.
And regarding the Assessors Department, I wanted to thank you also. I know it's a heavy lift. About the recruiting for the assessor position, is it still, are the pool of candidates still relatively low? How long do you think it's going to find the right one?
I know. It is low. I think it's the times. I'm not sure. I'm hoping we get one. We really do need one. And I think as of right now, we only got one application in, but we're talking it up.
So is Deborah your consultant?
She is our consultant. She's in the office one day, and she does one-day remote.
Mm-hmm.
And she's fabulous. She has 30-plus years, so we've learned a lot from her. I wish we could have her full-time.
That would be wonderful. I have no other questions. I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Calder.
Madam Chair, just a point on advertising for assessor. We've been complaining that we're not, in many cases, paying market rate, therefore we're not getting applicants. On this advertisement, we are promoting market rate, and we still only have one applicant. So there's something that we've recognized, that we realize, is we need to go recruit top candidates, that good employees, great employees, aren't reading the MMA job postings. And so just the way we hired the finance manager, we're recruiting. We're reaching out to well-known, well-established professionals in their field and convincing them as to why Stoughton is the right place to be. And we've had some successes in doing that, and I believe we're going to have to do that for assessor as well.
True.
Okay.
Please.
So I'll do IT now, if that's okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Gito.
Thank you. You'll be leaving that organization soon, but I guess before you leave, what would you consider to be success in that organization? And how would you measure it?
Okay. I think that's an excellent question, actually. I would consider success in that department to be cross-training, to make sure that we never fall short again. It's pretty vulnerable when there's an employee at any of our departments that holds everything that they know without anybody else knowing that knowledge. So I think documenting, training, and making sure that our data is where it needs to be, I would hold that as success. And I think even though I will not be involved, I will be, to a point, making sure that billing and the data, and I will somewhat be involved there, just to make sure I can extend any expertise I have.
I think all the things you mentioned are very important. What do you consider to be success for the assessing function in the town? And I'm not disparaging anything that you've...
Yeah.
I think that what you said is something that every department needs to do.
Mm-hmm. I agree, too.
Specifically for the assessing office.
Well, I think it's really important that we know our product, that we know that we can support the customers, everybody that comes in, that we have the right answers, that we stand behind the integrity of the data that we have, that we can help assist tax rate decisions, that we fund the town the way we're supposed to, and that we follow all the D O R rules. I would say undoubtedly, those are things we should be doing, too. I feel like, are you looking for something that I'm not?
No, no, I'm not. Look, I'm not looking for anything aside from your wisdom.
Yeah, and I'm still learning.
And what I'm, what, I mean, I'm going to ask this question from everyone because those are questions that need to be answered, it seems to me. I mean, you need to know what you're producing and how you're measuring whether or not you're getting there.
Yeah.
And that's what, that's the question that I'm asking. So let's get to the measurement side of that.
Yeah, and I think where I'm new, everything I learn, I want to do better. So we may have, we may have another plateau we need to reach, and I may not have discovered it yet.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for asking. Okay, I'll move on to IT unless anybody else has any other questions.
Mr. Carrara, one more question.
It's not a question, Trish. It's more like a comment. We always advertise in the same old things, the Beacon, MMA. Maybe we got to, you know, reach out to different other labor force-type associations or something to see what we can get out of it, just to shake it up, and then maybe change the, add to something a little more upbeat, instead of we're just looking for this person. You know, we're looking for an exciting, active person, take over, you know, assessing like that, you know?
Yeah.
Almost like, hey, we're going to sell it.
I hear what you're saying.
Is what you're doing, because throwing money at a situation, the person gets in there, yeah, the money, we meant market money, but are they a market-level person?
Right, and it's also such a specialized field.
I'm not panicking because you've got a good handle on it, and I appreciate that. That's why I'm not panicking. I think we've got to look at our ads a little bit, a little bit better, that it's like the same old crackers. Yep. You know what I mean?
Yeah, it was advertised in the assessing, I forget what it's called, but they have their own little world. It was advertised there.
Sometimes you want to reach out to like the accounting people who want to get out of that business drool and get in something that might be a little safe for them, even if like they're competent to get that license that they need or the accreditation, or maybe some of them have it. But there are people like you that are in other positions that have what it takes. So why not throw a curve?
Yeah, we were hoping to get expertise. I was hoping to, like, I think where we work with Deborah, and she has 30-plus years, it'd be great to have somebody with expertise, but that, it might not end up being what we get for right now. But I hear what you're saying. I appreciate that.
Yes, Mr. Calder.
Madam Chair, Scott's point is well-taken. In this tough labor market, if somebody is pursuing a job only for money, they're probably not the best candidate. So I agree with Scott's point. We have to enthusiastically brand and sell the position the best we can. And Trish and I have worked together, meeting with candidates in this position, not this position, but in the finance position. We probably met with a half a dozen candidates, and it was us selling them, not them selling us, because they came credentialed. So Scott's point is right on. We need to pitch it. We need to sell it. I'll look at those ads tomorrow. I haven't looked closely at them, other than the credentials. But we can afford to wait for the perfect candidate because Trish is involved, and it's stable and it's going well, and we thank her for that. But she's a member of the senior team, that there are so many places in the organization that we can use that type of enthusiasm, that type of commitment. So we'd like to get her out of there as soon as possible, but we're not going to rush it until we have that right person in that job. Thanks for all you do, Trish, on assessing. Now let's talk about IT.
Okay. So first of all, we had to assist with the police and fire transition to Holbrook 911. So that's done. We can cross that off the list. We had a major MUNIS upgrade this year. That was fun. We completed that. AssessPro, we upgraded the software in assessing, and I just put that in there because that was a major database upgrade. I wanted to talk about something that just recently happened, which I'm excited about. We applied for a cybersecurity grant along with the schools for $100,000, so I'm hoping we get that. That'll allow us to formalize our cybersecurity plan, along with senior staff and administrators, and I know that Superintendent Beata is out there. So I'm looking forward to that. The water sewer online payment capability, and I kind of have that in between what I've already accomplished and what we need to do. From an IT standpoint, that's completed. People will be able to pay their water sewer bills online, just not yet. We're just vetting it, we're testing it, and then we're going to market it. So we hear you, citizens, that you really want to have that done, and that's completed from an IT standpoint. That's it for, well, I mean, there's a lot of accomplishments we've done, but I just try to highlight some of the stuff. Goals, we have, we plan on being really involved with online permitting with Mark's department and all the other departments. It's going to be a heavy lift, and looking forward to that. The police department infrastructure upgrade is going on right now. We have to do a little manipulating to the MDF closet over there, so I'm looking forward to that. Timing-wise, we wanted to wait until the 911 transition was done because we didn't want all of that going on at the same time. Website, and I am actually working on the website, just so you know, Lou. I have an intern, and I only have her four hours a week, unfortunately, and we're doing a lot of data analytics. So Tom had asked me, I'm gathering all the data analytics for you and the other things that you had asked about. So that's what I have for goals. Things creep up all the time in the IT world, and we just have to be ready for the next thing to come along. But those are heavy projects. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to help answer them.
Thank you, Trish. I see Mr. Gito has his light on green.
I just didn't...
Okay, that's okay. I see Mr. McCrisky has his light on green. Okay.
Oh.
I'll turn to my right. No questions? I just have one question. I just have one question. We can't let you go without just one question on this.
Yeah, sure, that's fine.
My question is regarding Munis.
Okay.
So you mentioned Munis in the assessors section of your talk, and Munis on IT.
Yeah.
Are we now using all the functionality of Munis?
Yes, yes.
Or all the modules being used?
All the ones that we're going to use, except for... That we haven't implemented, that we need to re-implement, is utility billing. So once the water system goes on, the new meters, we'll be able to have that brought into our general ledger system. So other than that, yes, it's all being utilized.
Congratulations on that. It's been a long time... Mr. Gito is on green now. Go, Mr. Gito!
It's the same question. What do you consider success in the IT department? And what are your measures for that?
Okay.
I mean, we've talked a lot about success. I've mentioned a couple of different websites. Weston, which won an award last year, and Easton. And so I guess I'm looking to see where... What should Stoughton's information systems be like?
Okay, I can elaborate on that. I think that...
And how do you measure it?
Yep, yep. In addition to... I think the biggest thing with IT is prioritizing. So we want to service all of our departments in a timely manner, make sure that nobody is falling behind in where they need to be, system-wide, that we're utilizing the latest technology, we're able to deliver whatever we need to in a timely basis, and that we're being proactive about making sure that we're protected. Cybersecurity-wise, we're always patching things. It's a rough time right now, as far as the website is concerned. And I hear your... I hear that it's important to make sure that we're doing the right thing with communicating to the citizens. We've tried to push it out there, you know, through notify me, have people sign up to get a lot of people... And I have the data analytics, which I'll get to you soon, so I can compare that. A lot of people are utilizing the website more than they did when we first rolled it out. I think it would be in our best interest to make it look more like Weston, and that's the next stage that we're getting at, so we can organize our data. I think it is more about the organization and getting the department heads to update their data. So we are working on that. What else? Uptime. I think about the police station and the systems, and making sure that, you know, our systems are up and running when... At critical moments, in all moments. And nobody wants to wait for their computer to come back up if they're trying to be functional. So that's our job. So I measure it like we're in assistant role, that we help everybody do their role, do their job, and I think of us as almost being a tool for other people to do their job. So I always measure it that way. And then I think it's really important that we hear all of our customers, no matter what department it is, and we service their needs. So that's how, I guess, I gauge our success.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much, Trish. Did I hear you say that you have an intern?
I do. I have an intern from Bridgewater.
Oh, my gosh!
Yeah, her name is Zoe, and I only have her four hours a week, unfortunately. She's great, and I had to go through... We had to go through training, so now she knows how to update the website. She knows that software now.
Oh.
And is running data analytics, so we can find out if somebody's searching a certain item on the website and is looking for something. We'll have a list of that, so we can make sure that, you know, things are prominently placed, that people are looking for, and if they're looking for something that we don't have, that we can get that information up there for them.
That's wonderful. Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Nice seeing you again.
Thank you.
We'll move right along to the next department head, and that's Cedar Hill. Well, hello. Welcome, Victor. Haven't seen you in a little while.
Good evening. How are you? Just start. There we go.
Yes, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Victor Berusa from Cedar Hill Golf Course. Our accomplishments for the first half of the year. We finished last fiscal year up 18.4% over fiscal year '22. We upgraded our golf carts and the quantity, which is increasing revenue. Those are up about 25% at the moment. Extensive safety work done for trees, particularly around tee boxes, making sure that there's nothing that's going to fall and hurt anybody or damage anything. And our pro shop team is running at an optimum level. We've added a kind of mid-shift in the middle. They're all volunteers, so adding a third shift in the middle gives away a little bit more golf, but it takes a lot of pressure off of guys coming in for eight, nine-hour shifts on a volunteer schedule. So definitely helps, and it keeps our doors open until dark. Right now, the pro shop runs at about 94 hours a week, and it's all volunteer. So it's been fantastic. Our goals going forward, we've just started our construction with the help of procurement, and the CPC article from last year was approved. We've got a construction company, they started this week. So making sure that that gets done and finished to completion. Scouting for a grounds crew and assistant superintendent is always going to be a process there. I'm trying to... Sorry, I can't see. I was trying to fake it for a second, but I can't see. We're looking to explore and implement new and creative revenue opportunities, such as night golf and a couple leagues that we have going on. Katz Academy out of Braintree is Cambridge Academy of Science and Technology. Their golf team is practicing and playing at the golf course. And we're also looking to improve communication to customer staff, town hall, through frequency and consistency. Yeah, pretty much wraps everything up there. Any questions?
Vice Chair Cavey.
So I'll also just lead off by saying that you've done a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Your staff has done absolutely fantastic job. I don't golf, so when I go over there, it's usually for the food, for the entertainment, and bands, live music, karaoke. It's a wonderful clubhouse, but also, you know, even though I'm not walking around the course, it's clearly well-maintained and beautiful.
Thank you.
And also very active. I was actually there grabbing lunch on St. Patrick's Day, and this last Sunday, and there are people out there golfing and having a great time.
Right.
The weather was turning nice, so you've really turned that place around. And people never gave up hope. You know, there was always this hope that we were getting closer and closer to success, and you pulled it off. And we're seeing, you know, all the benefits of your hard work in that. I do have some questions, it's really just out of curiosity more than anything else.
Sure.
Many... Quite a while ago, probably like six years ago-ish, maybe five years ago, there was a butter who had some land that was looking to perhaps offer to the town for the purpose of expanding the golf course. And at the time, even though town meeting had a lot of hopes that we could turn things around, I don't think they're ready to make that investment at that point. And that might not come up again. We may have lost that opportunity. But are there areas where, you know, you see there could be areas for expansion? If we got lucky, if the opportunity arise?
I've got big, big ideas, but we would certainly need more space for a lot of those things to happen. So I would say that we average probably five phone calls a day, asking if we have a driving range. At least five. Infancy, very, very infancy. This might even be the second time it's been said out loud. But one of those things would be something like a driving range, but more like a target golf, not top golf. But like a target golf situation, there's a lot of money in that. There's very, very little maintenance. It's mowed twice a week. You collect golf balls once or twice a day. But it's a matter of... We do have some of that land. Parking becomes a little bit of an issue, so we have... There's some space issues, but there is... I know that there's a spot on the other side of the chateau that actually connects to us. And there's been baby ideas, but there's lots of ways we can do it. We can turn it into a 12-hole course. There's, you know, those are very, very popular. No one has time for 18 anymore. It's... As much as the 18-hole course is nice, 12 and 9 is... There's 10 holes courses as well, where I want to write in sharing. Those things have actually really taken off really, really big. All the golf course superintendent magazines, I think every single one of them in the past six months have had an article talking about nine holes is the way to go. So if they don't offer a nine-hole option, they need to.
So hopefully you feel like that question was unfair, but I just kind of... I'm just curious to hear, like, hear your dream out loud a little bit and see like what kinds of options you have.
I can go for another hour on dreams. Expanding the buildings, simulator golf, there's a lot of things that we could do.
Yeah, the timing didn't work out for that article. That was a shame, because it really... I think that if we had done it, obviously it would have paid off, but there was no way for people to know that at the time.
Right, we had just approved... At that point, we had just approved the sixth hole. I don't even know if that had been completed yet.
Yeah.
And we weren't making money at that point. So the idea was there, the thought was there, the vision was there, but it was the wrong time.
Yeah.
And even though in my heart I wanted it, it was the wrong time. And I see that now. We went up 48% when we did the sixth hole. We went up another 26% when COVID happened, and we're growing at another 23% now.
Yeah.
So we don't know where the ceiling is, but we keep chasing it, so.
Thank you very much for everything.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cavey. I see Mr. Gito, did you have a question?
Yes.
I think that it'd probably be easy for you to go through the what's success and how do you measure it. I think your function is pretty clear in that area, so I won't put you through that. But you might want to just write it down and email it to me.
Actually, I did hear you ask, and I did write it down anyway, because it's not...
Good enough.
There's one extra part of the answer that you might not think of. It's not just about the number of golfers or the revenue that we've brought in. So there is another aspect of my job that a lot of people don't even take into consideration, is that we're an environmental steward. We are there to make, you know, the golf course green and beautiful, but to make sure that chemical interference is at a minimum, taking care of and protecting the bee population, pollination. All that green space is a giant filter to clean the water, clean the air, and all those things come into play, too. So to see it all green and growing and becoming that environmental steward, it makes me really proud. That's...
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
The second part of this is you get an extra question, because Mr. Cavey asked you a question. And that is, do you write any of these plans down anywhere? And do you talk with the engineering department or anyone else about what you might be able to do if only you had another piece of property or a little bit more money, so that we could maybe join your team? I mean, I'm not going to golf.
Me either. I'm not a golfer either, by any means.
But that doesn't mean that there aren't a lot of other people that do.
Right, no, I like to cut grass.
And it's really important to have places where people can enjoy themselves.
So I have this little hardcover notebook, a little 5x7 notebook, that I have a lot of my own personal notes, journal, things that I did for the day, what, you know, projects that were completed, performed, the time I got to the golf course, the time I... It's just a daily journal of everything that I do. And there are some sketches in there, and there's some parts in there that do have ideas, infancy ideas. I only bring it out loud when I think that it's something that could become in our reality or I need other input. I'm not claiming to know everything. I don't know everything about what all the other departments can offer. I talk to the DPW a lot. They have a lot of bigger machinery that I don't have, or skill sets that I don't have either. So I do kind of lean on them, ask them for advice, what their thoughts are, where we should go, if it's something that I see can happen. If it's... As far as the property goes, I haven't really brought that up to anybody in my head. I was talking with our architect, and that's working on our CPC project now. And he and I were talking about the target golf thing and how it could be a massive thing. He owns a golf course down in Rhode Island, and he's implemented it and apparently done very, very well. It's kind of a cash cow, because, again, it has no maintenance, so.
So you know that I'm kind of a data geek, and I like to think about what might happen a little bit down the line. It really seems important in a function like yours that there is a vision. And it's... It can be something that a lot of people might be able to participate in and help move an activity like your own ahead. And it may be public, it may be private money involved in that. But I would suggest that you give some thought to that.
I know not everybody's a golfer, and those arguments have gotten a whole lot easier since we are now self-funding. So those conversations are a lot more realistic now, as long as we maintain that and we stay above our budget. We're going to put... We have a nice rainy day fund that we're kind of preparing for, so we're never going to have a subsidy again, so.
Right. So budgets are important, and vision is important to get a budget.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
The course is gorgeous.
Thank you very much.
I have friends that golf, and they have nothing but high praises, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And if anyone would like to come up and see it, even though whether you're a golfer or not, just let me know, come on down. We'll give you a tour, and we invite all of you down, so thank you.
Thank you so much. So what we're doing now, we have three additional departments that are going to present tonight, and Mr. Calder is going around to ask if they... Because of the time, if they would like to meet on another date or stay tonight and present. Listen. Another time? Okay, so that means we look forward to seeing procurement, police, animal control, and human resources at another time. Thank you so much for coming tonight, though, but we look forward to hearing about your departments and your goals and accomplishments. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, the Assistant Chief has promised to keep his informed presentation in two, five minutes.
Okay. He wasn't tonight, but that's okay.
Poll removal.
Poll removal. Okay, this is item number seven, poll removal update. Thank you very much. Hello there, hi!
Good evening to the residents of Stoughton. My esteemed colleagues are here with me through you, Madam Chair, to the board on behalf... Yes, I do. On behalf of the town manager, I'm here to brief on the status for a double poll removal for the town of Stoughton. Slightly less than a year ago, I'm the town manager, and I carcassed about issues with our utilities and looking for a path forward. How could we plan, organize, coordinate, and manage this? In the past, it seemed to be ad hoc through different departments and agencies through the town, number one. And then we truly did not have a point of contact on the town's end or a person to reach out to Verizon and Natural Grid, who are both the owners of our utility pools, and from the national database, which is our National Joint Utilities Notification System, an acronym known as the N-June Portal Database, that is... Notification System, an acronym known as the N-June Portal Database, that is truly a clearinghouse for all utilities, to include double pole removal, trench access, and so on and so forth. So the first thing I had to do after speaking with the town manager was fall back on some of my experience in the fire department and, quite frankly, through the military and facilities management, and once I was able to establish a point of contact through the support of a town manager for Verizon and National Grid. It was great to have that point of contact, but they just, you know, completely said, when we're ready, we'll get ready, and I just went directly to the national database engines itself. And that's where I was able to get the most help and support, and they recommended that, you know, I reach out to town council, which I have, Brian Winter, if I have talked on previous occasions about this topic, and what do we do if at the town level we've done everything we can on our end? Where do we go forward? And his first recommendation is make sure that we are doing everything on our end, and if we are, then we can provide that data and go through the select board and then use the Mass General laws to support them and push them. So starting with the fire department, I performed a joint team with Trish from IT and Paul, our superintendent from the Public Works Department, and we came out with a coordinated plan that I would reach out to both of those agencies. DPW for the removal of lighting for any of our old double poles. The fire department will remove our fire alarm wiring. And on Trish's end, we have specific areas of town where fiber optics are connected with the town. And you don't have to look at that handout now, feel free to just research that at a different time, and you can reach out to me by email, stop by the fire station, or just give me a call, and I'd be happy to, you know, brief you and bring you up to speed. So my, where we're at now is, in the last 10 years, we've had 200 double poles removed in town, which averages out to about 20 a year. I think we can do better, I think. I don't know what that average is, other than say, I have reached out to our neighboring communities, but they're all of varying different sizes, and they've run into the same issues for the removal of double poles. They just know they want them out for different reasons, mostly for optics and public safety, which for us, that's the most important, is public safety. The last thing we want is our residents or pedestrians walking on the street because they have to make their way around double poles that are on the sidewalks. So it is important from a public safety standpoint that we have these double poles removed, and I'm more than happy to be that conduit and that advisor to the town manager. And if the board would like me to continue that, I'd be more than happy to continue, especially from an emergency management standpoint. On the town's end, we have removed the utilities to include fiber optics, public works lighting, and fire alarm cable from 87 poles that are in the queue, that the town has done their part, and we're waiting for Verizon, National Grid, and Comcast to go in on their end. From N-June's end, there are regional director that I've established a good rapport and relationship with. She said, in the queue, they're ready to remove 30 poles on their end, meaning that National Grid, Verizon, and Comcast have cleaned all the poles and they're ready for removal. My recommendation to the board, I'm sure there is motivation from time to time to hold, quote-unquote, their feet to the fire for the utilities when they come in to install new poles, but the renewal and upgrade and modernization of our utilities, I wholeheartedly support, and I believe the whole community should support. We don't want to see our infrastructure degraded if we have to do everything in our power and our end, and they still do not, you know, give us the removal that's, you know, consistent with what we're providing as far as keeping these utility poles free of all of the town's utilities. Then we could go back to town council and say, Brian, we've averaged 20 poles a year, but we've actually consolidated an effort between all the town agencies, and we're going above and beyond. And from where I stand, we should recommend to the board that they, you know, if for nothing else, begin correspondence with these utilities and compel them to follow Mass General Law. Before we do that, my recommendation would be that for this year, let's stay the course. We have a plan in place with, you know, a point of contact that, you know, the, all departments are coming through to the town manager, and let's get a 12-month stand to see where we match up against the last 20 years of pole removal and see how we do this year. For the last three months, we've removed nine poles up to last Thursday, and I don't know if he's still in the audience, I'll have to look, because I do not want to betray his confidence.
Yes.
Mr. Van Tresco is in the office, because we talked the other day, they were removing a pole out in front of his house. So poles are being removed, hopefully nine poles in three months, if they stay on that course, it would double the rate that they've been removed within the last 20 years. But, you know, proof's in the pudding, we'll have to keep an eye on this and keep direct correspondence. You might ask me, when's the last time I talked to any of these utilities? Well, today I talked to Rod Jenks from Comtech, who is Trish's point of contact for the fiber optics for the town, and he got right back to me to say, because the last poles were requested to remove our utility hardware for, were on Grove Street and Pleasant, and he said that there were no fiber optics. That concludes my portion of the brief, and if you'd like me to remain in this position as consulting for the town manager, please let the town manager know that, and I'd be happy to do that. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
We have one question so far.
Do you like me to define success, Mr. Giedel?
We have one question so far, Maestro Kavy.
Yeah, so I'll just keep this very simple. I, this is outside of my general area of expertise, I just really want to make sure that I understand the definition of a double pole. I'm assuming it's where some, for some reason or another, work has been done as necessary for a single pole. They just essentially attach another one to it instead of removing and replacing it, so they don't interfere with all of the wires that are there to begin with. This is intended to be a temporary fix, and they intend to come back and fix it, and that's getting those updates has been what's been slow. Am I on the right page, or am I less understanding it?
You're partially on the right page, Mr. Kavy. They do have a lifespan, these utility poles, and they want to keep them modernized, so that is part of the reasons where they'll install new utility poles, and then hence need to remove the old one, which means all of the gear needs to be transferred from all of the prospective parties, and until all such gear is removed, they don't remove the old pole. But from time to time, whether it's damage or due to natural disasters or storms where there's damage to the utility poles, they'll determine that they need to replace them on the spot.
When I look at the map of all of the locations for the double poles, I wonder if we should just get a map of where there aren't double poles. It might actually be smaller.
I know. I went over this with the town manager, and I can see, you know, the look and face, but really, that's a very condensed map of, you know, 16 square miles.
Yeah.
There's thousands of utility poles in the town of Stoughton, and that depicts right around 80 poles, I know, on that small eight-and-a-half-by-11 sheet of paper. It looks like a lot. You can see the hot zone areas of, like, near Cobb's Corner and Route 138, near the center of town, Washington Street area, and we've been getting, you know, many upgrades as far as water mains and roadway clearance. It would just make sense that the utilities are in kind upgrading their systems also.
Yeah. Thanks, thank you for the work. I only produced the report, but I can tell it has all the kinds of things that I'd be looking for. There's a lot of data in here, some maps, visuals, and some narratives, so, you know, this is exactly what, it helps me do my job, so I thank you very much for the way you put this together.
Thank you. I see Mr. Coulter has his hand up.
Madam Chair, I'd like to elaborate just a little more on the chief's presentation. Understanding how the utilities work is like understanding the federal government. It's very, very integrated, matrixed, and complicated. Until the Assistant Chief was assigned this project, I think we would have to own, meaning the town, most of the responsibility for double poles. National Grid puts in poles, excuse me, that need to be replaced for a number of reasons, and they immediately change over their wires, the electrical wires, when they put in that pole. But then it's up to the town to strip the pole of all the other elements that are attached to that pole, fire alarms, low voltage wires, fiber, as well as other apparatus that are on the poles. Until a year ago, we didn't quite understand how that process worked. So on this national database that we now have the information on, due to Jack's involvement and leadership, we now know exactly what's going to be done, and we understand the legislation that allows us to charge them penalties and fines for every day beyond which we have removed all of our apparatus. So in the past six, nine months, Jack has led an effort to remove all the town apparatus. Trish has been involved, Paul's been involved, the fire department's been involved, and now we're pushing through their data system, through their information system, the removal, and we're tracking the date that everything is free to be removed, not by National Grid, but by Verizon. They have an agreement between the two of them. National Grid will replace the poles, and Verizon will remove the old ones. So Jack's been bird-dogging it to get them removed, we're on a run rate of three times the previous averages, but there's a long way to go, and we've got a good person managing it, and I just thought it'd be appropriate to give the board an update on the plan that's in place, the program that Jack's running, and the progress that's being made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. I see Mr. Carrara has his hand up.
Madam Chairman, I don't know if we need a vote of the board, but it's, Tom's prerogative to have the Assistant Fire Chief do op-itting for us, because he directs that. I would like to stay with it and have Jack, if you don't have a problem with it, Jack, right?
No, not at all, Mr. Carrera. I'm happy to do it.
You're doing an effective job.
I'll be proud when you start levying the fines, because I would have already started.
Well, we had to start somewhere, number one, and number two, our hope is that by centralizing the system and providing data at a quicker rate and having a direct line of communications that I don't believe we necessarily had in the past with the national database system, I think all our goal is to expedite the process and get them removed at a higher rate than they have been over the last several years.
I went by a pole the other day, and I couldn't believe, I'm looking at a piece of slash steel with two lags in it, and then I look up and I go, you gotta be kidding me, you know? It just, I can't fathom that they allow that to go on like that, and they got guide wires that are snapped off all over the place, the kids are tossing them out into the traffic like this, you know, and there's wires wrapped around poles down the bottom, the kids are tying them on fences, you know, and just being kids, but I pull over and I have to whip out a bunch of wire ties, and I wrap it around the pole, I come back, it's still fun to throw it out in the road.
So fully understood, and from an emergency management standpoint, we have fostered excellent relationship with National Grid, EverSource, and Verizon for our natural disasters and relief, so we certainly want to keep that. When Chief Carroll calls, they answer the phone, because they have a trust and faith that, you know, we are going to give them credible information and support them also. So in talking with Brian, you know, previously last year, when we spoke about this, he said we need to do everything in our part to make sure that if it comes to that, and we're going to legally compel them, that we have, you know, said that we've done everything within our means, and you're not providing the support at, you know, the pace that it should be. But my recommendation would be that we maintain this course, I can continue to keep the town manager abreast, and I'm happy to, you know, speak to any and all of the board throughout the next year, and let's, you know, work this out and see if this does affect actual progress. I know the proof will be in the pudding, but we've enacted it and putting this in place, and let's see what we can get as results out of it. That would be my recommendation before we take legal action. I don't know, Brian, how do you feel?
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for this, and thank you for sharing your detailed plan.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Great job. Moving right along to our next item on our agenda, which is item number eight, New Elementary School Building Project Presentation. Would our guests please step forward, introduce yourself, and... Who will be the lead presenter? If you could start off by introducing yourself. Yeah, you probably need some more microphones. And Attorney Recupero, it's nice seeing you again. Joe B., it's great seeing you again. Yes, when it's, just hit the button, it turns green. You may need to hold it a little close, as Trish mentioned.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Always good to be in front of the board, and through you to your members. My name is TJ Recupero, for your record. I am on the Elementary School Building Committee, serve with 13 other members, one of whom you knows to my left who will be speaking tonight, Dr. Baeda. Also with us tonight, who you hear from is Carl Franceschi of DRA Architects, and Tim Bonfati of Vertex. And we have a PowerPoint presentation, you've gotten a PDF of it, but thank you, if I can. Jill DePereira, your secretary's been fantastic.
Yes, she is great.
And also thank you to Town Manager, Mr. Coulter, who's met with us several times along the way, has been only too welcome to any questions we've had facilitating us, and Mark Tisdale also. So my role is to talk at the beginning and the end, and let the important people talk in the middle. But I want to set things up, and I want to do it in an interesting way, because I think there are some really important points that lay the groundwork for everything you're going to hear. For starters, we're here tonight for the purpose of inserting a funding article into a special town meeting, which I believe the board opened seven days ago. Your town charter requires that it be open for seven days, and that 42 days after it's closed, it's eligible for a vote, which puts us on a flight path for a town meeting vote for funding. Or not, it's entirely up to town meeting, of course, but I'll get into that in a second. And eventually to a debt exclusion vote by the voters in early June, which we'd also ask you to entertain. We've identified June 4th as being the ideal date for that, and I'll mention that for a second. And I don't want to talk too long, but I do want to talk about what got us to this point, because why we're here is to ask for insertion of a warrant article. Why we're here now is actually, I think, more significant, and I'll try to fold that into the process. We are on the identical path, feasibility study path that the high school was on. And in fact, it was also a presidential election year, so we dealt with several of the same obstacles of timing elections and votes, and around a series of primary elections, and all the considerations that go into that. So it was good in that respect that we've dealt with a lot of these issues, but why we're here now is that the MSBA board... But why we're here now is that the MSBA Board that invites us into this process and eventually will provide us with funding for approximately 42% of the entire project cost of, well, we'll get into that, 42% of the construction costs that we'll be asking for from town meeting and the voters. Their schedule for our benchmarks along the feasibility study path and as well as their ultimate vote don't necessarily line up with this town's benchmarks for the dates that you require for submission of articles for an annual town meeting. So much like the high school, we had to do this as a request for a special town meeting article inside of the annual town meeting. If you go back to 2016, you'll see it lines up almost identically. There was a May 2nd vote on Article S1 of the 2016 in a special town meeting, in the annual town meeting. And then there was a June 8th vote, I think it was either the seventh or eighth vote for the high school under a debt exclusion. So this goes back, the committee was formed in 2022. We've been meeting since then, but in fact, the process goes back quite a ways longer. And we got here because we're in this MSBA process. And the board knows this, but this is as much for the people watching at home as anything else. Because we don't just show up on a wonderful Tuesday in March and say, "Here's our project. Please tell us how much you love it." We go through what has been a process of about 12 to 14 months, something like that, where we have to study certain things, submit certain plans to the MSBA, go through a formal process, look at all facets of this project, and submit that to the MSBA ultimately with a request that they fund a portion of, a significant portion of it, tens of millions of dollars, the balance of which we're going to ask the, well, we'll recommend to the town that the voters fund. Because what started, this whole process goes back quite a ways further, back in 2010, when there was a, strike that. There is a second slide, Gilda, Slide Number Two. Yep. Right. So this goes back quite a ways further, in 2010, when there was a facilities assessment done identifying what deficiencies existed in what buildings in town. Schools, of course, had several. We hadn't done a new school project or any significant improvements to our schools in quite some time. I think Joe and I were joking about how the last great school improvement project that this town had before the high school was a bunch of boxes that were set up next to the junior high and then closed in, called an addition. So this is making up for quite a bit of time. And so taking that facilities assessment, we submitted to the MSBA a statement of interest. And in fact, there was a statement of interest submitted back when I was on the board as early as, I want to say, 2013. And at the same time as the high school project, in 2014, the MSBA came to Stoughton, met with myself and a couple of members of the of the school committee, superintendent, a couple of other people in town. It was an informal meeting, but they toured the high school, they toured the South School, and they decided, based on the statements of interest that we have submitted and the deficiencies in those, that they invited us into the high school project, excuse me, they invited a high school project into the MSBA feasibility study process. Because that was a bigger community impact project. So as you know, we went through, and there was a high school project completed in 2019? Started in 2000 with a vote of town meeting in 2016, the feasibility study, much as we've done prior to that. And the statement of interest on the South School was, you know, I want to characterize this at the time as more pressing in terms of need, but certainly, you know, it was a smaller school, served less of the community, so the high school was what was selected. And the need went on, though. That was 2016 when we were submitted into the high school, excuse me, when the high school project was funded. And now we're, we'll be about 10 years past that. If this project is approved, when we'll be tying down the final details and hopefully looking at a completed school. So these schools are aging, and our committee is, in accordance with the MSBA regs, we're charged with the duty of submitting to you what will address the facility's needs based on an educational program that Dr. Baeda will tell you about, and meeting the facility's deficiencies that Carl Franceschi will tell you about, with cost certainly in mind, and, you know, the cost efficiency is certainly one of the criteria that is identified in the MSBA regs. And Tim Bonfati will tell you how we've met our cost efficiencies in this respect. But for present purposes, all we're asking for this board is that you insert the article. We will go out into this community, we will tell as many people as we can about it so that we can educate everybody on how we got from point A to point B. It was a long process. It's going to be 20 years by the time we, assuming it's approved by the voters in town meeting, by the time we put a shovel in the ground, it will have been 20 years from beginning to end when we get to that point. Long time in the coming, and Stoughton school buildings are not getting any younger. Certainly, we are in the position now, with the scope of this project, trying to do some catch-up over what has been a, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to talk negatively at all about generations past, but we've certainly deferred quite a bit of maintenance on our buildings, school buildings particularly over the years. And this project, I think, I hope you'll hear, what is the most efficient and feasible, because that was our charge, means of addressing that. The next slide, if I can pass on to Tim Bonfati, who can bring us into the meat of the program.
Thank you, T.J. So this slide, and thank you for having us tonight, by the way, we appreciate the opportunity. This slide is really picking up from where T.J. was talking about the process to get the project in the feasibility study. So Stoughton was invited to start the feasibility study by the MSBA in December of 2022. We were studying two options. We were studying the South School and the MSBA on looking at the situation in Stoughton and the demographics and what was happening in the school system. Also gave it the opportunity to look at a consolidated school with the Wilkins School. So the process in the feasibility study really undertook was to look at not only where to build a new school or an add renovation, but also whether to go with the consolidated school or the single school option. So as you can see in the beginning of this slide, and I won't spend a lot of time on this, I think it's pretty diagrammatic, but we spent in the school committee, and by the way, Catherine Weiss was ill tonight, but she's here, the chairman of the school committee is here online. We dealt with the consolidation issue. So last year, the school committee met five times to meet through that, work through that issue. There were several community forums in last year, and in August, the decision was made to move forward with the consolidated school. From that point on, our job was to work through the schematic design, that's about 20% to 30% of the design process. This follows the same process that the high school, as T.J. mentioned, followed in terms of how you work through the process. And we did that through the fall and into the spring. There were 19 building committee meetings in that timeframe, additional community forums, and we arrived at the schematic design that you'll see tonight, which came with the budget and the schedule in February of this year. And we're on track to go through the MSBA process in terms of getting the board approval for May, I mean, I'm sorry, for April, April 24th of this month, next month. And we have a meeting actually on Thursday to sort of work with the staff to sort of tee it up for that meeting. So as you can see, a lot of what we're doing now between then is going to be this kind of communicating, both to the public and official boards, but also to community groups similar to what we did with the high school. And T.J. mentioned the timing that we're looking at around town meeting and the debt exclusion votes. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Baeda.
Next slide, please. Joe Baeda, Superintendent of Schools, thank you for having us this evening. Appreciate you taking the time because I know you had a long evening. I know you have the PowerPoint, and I'm sure you've prepped for it. You'll have more questions afterwards, so feel free to reach out. I'm not going to read PowerPoints because that's probably the worst thing you can do as a presentation, but just really try to speak to the major issues and deficiencies at the South School. I did with both Tom and Steve do a visit to the South School earlier. They actually visited all our schools this year. And so it's very clear, going back as far as 2007, if you look at the Facilities Master Plan, that adults, both school side and taxpayers, came together and looked at the South School, and the idea of just life and safety issues would be taking place. Then the decision later, as you know, was the high school, and now here we are today with this South Elementary consolidation effort. Of the deficiencies, if you're a taxpayer and you vote, you see it every time you walk into that building, just in the place that you actually go to vote on some of the issues that take place, just to make a connection. But the real issue that we have here in this entire slide really speaks to being beyond the life expectancy of this school, number one. And number two, programmatically providing what we need to in a school that has K to five children. And by the way, one of the fastest growing sides of town in terms of our school enrollment is the South School, which has kind of been strange to see because that was never it. It was always that smaller school. But that's where we're seeing our push in enrollment. You know about the parking spaces, if you've been there, event spaces and so on, just aren't available. The physical needs of students and staff, including accessibility, are a concern within that school. We just recently had some of our parking lot areas actually start to cave in on one side of the building because of trash pickup and all the moisture and everything that's down there. And so the decision to look at all of this was really to take a look at what is in the best interest of children for Stoughton Public Schools. Next slide, please. So the district-wide improvements that we see, and I want to be very careful about being clear about a couple of points. A consolidation project means long-term planning for the town of Stoughton. By consolidating to now a school that combines through redistricting, so this is not taking the students from the Wilkins and moving them to the South, or the South students just staying at the South, it's a total redistricting, which, by the way, will be taking place in Stoughton regardless of the vote of this project. In other words, we're at a point where we have to look at redistricting because of all the population shifts that we are seeing with special education, EL, and so on. And so what you have here is, if you see a heat map, just like you probably saw earlier with the deputy's presentation, but our idea is to take a look long-term, because of improvements that we've been making at the other elementary schools, that the town of Stoughton would only long-term be looking at renovation additions of elementary schools, not building new elementary schools. That's the idea that came into play as part of this whole consolidation effort. Reducing overcrowding is a key component. We are one of the only communities in the South Shore that's growing by enrollment. People moving into town, nothing to do with the migrant situation, that's a whole different story, I just want to go on record. Improved flexibility that it gives us in terms of being literally the first 21st century elementary school in town, next to now our high school if this is passed, but also dedicated classrooms. Let's go back to 1972 and the IDEA Act, the federal special education law. What happened to all of the buildings back then? We took regular-sized classrooms, and in order to create specialized classrooms, we broke them apart, or we took them over, or whatever the case may be, because of this brand-new federal regulation that came into place, of which the life expectancy of these buildings goes before that in general. So the attached to a special needs program, and as you all know, I am a full proponent of in-district specialized programming for students. There are always students who need to go out of district. That is always going to happen. It's never going to be zero. But the idea that the children who play in town, go to school in town, get educated in town within our specialized programs is something that's very clear and dear, not only to the school committee, not only to myself, my predecessors, and those that take over for me in terms of special education. And then taking a look at our vision for our elementary school, and I'll end here. One of the biggest things that's happening in education today, as we look at our education plan and what we try to do, is we try to take a look at creating a district, not just a school, but a district that will have within it long-term planning on behalf of education, but also on behalf of cost to the taxpayer. We cannot afford as a town, and this is my fifth MSBA project, fifth, and a sixth one, I was a taxpayer and voted for at the high school. And so if you have a very clear vision of trying to put together that one consolidated school, and then you're looking, yes, there's a middle school project coming at some point, as you all know, but you're not looking long-term to do brand-new elementary schools. So you're consolidating, and we can talk some specifics about what that consolidation for other areas would look like as well. I'll turn it over.
Good evening. Carl Franceschi with DRA Architects. Good to see you. Thanks for taking the time. So, you know, based on those needs, we started the feasibility study, and I'll just quickly get to where we are today. As with all school projects, we start with an educational plan, a vision for what, as the superintendent mentioned, what, how the district wants teaching and learning to happen at the elementary school level. And then we look at the, you know, the physical available sites and the existing building and so forth. And the plan that was developed in Stoughton was very robust, very strong, very specific to how teaching and learning wanted to happen. And a couple of the highlights are on the slide there, of taking an elementary school with a grade range from kindergarten through fifth grade and say, "Well, you know, really it works most effectively if we can segregate the younger children from the older children, and physically in the way the building is organized." Has tended to be more successful, and we want to reinforce that. We want to take advantage of outdoor spaces. We sort of learned this through COVID, too, that education can take place not only in the building, but next to and near the building as well, outdoors. And you'll hear this several times tonight about this building being not just for the South District, but being for the entire community. And that was in the educational plan before anything was designed, that whatever is built, even if it were renovation addition, it should serve the entire community and have those specific spaces dedicated to helping not only special needs, but all children, in the way the Learning Commons, sort of the modern evolution of the library, becomes the heart of the building, and that there's a maker space in the building for science and technology education, even at this young grade. So if you can go to the next slide. We looked at many options. They were narrowed down to a sort of short list of four options. And actually, as was mentioned, there were four design options, but there were also two enrollment options as to whether it would be a single school or a larger consolidated school. One of the options was an addition renovation to the addition South, to the existing South School, but really proved not very feasible, proved very expensive, very disruptive, and not very educationally sound compared to the options of looking at new construction. And we did look at both new construction on the existing South site, as well as the other parcel nearby, the so-called Line Lumber Site, which the town acquired years ago in the '60s for school purposes. And so it's a wonderful resource that you have, that we now have the opportunity to make use of that. So we did look at several different configurations. The one that rose to the top by community acclaim, as well as the building committee, was the so-called Pinwheel one. You can sort of see the second one from the left there is the plan that is shaped like a pinwheel with wings to the building. If we go to the next slide, you can see how that fits on the Line Lumber Site. That piece of property is not contiguous with the existing South School, it's just north of it, and it does have frontage on Park Street. And it's a parcel of some 27 to 30 acres, I believe it is. Some of it is wetlands. It's a wooded site today, there are some trails through there now, but a very nice site that has some of the same feeling as the existing South School, kind of school in the woods, a little bit off of the street. off of the street. So the plan shows how the site will be developed. Again, thinking about community use, we tried to locate and make as compact a development as possible so that we're not using the entire parcel for this school. We're thinking about the future. That was a point that the building committee was strong on, saying, we need to reserve some of this land for future uses, not just to expand this building, which it could expand slightly, but it's more about perhaps other uses in town to be available for that. It does have the great opportunity, which the current South School does not have in terms of traffic flow, now that we can create a new driveway, a dedicated driveway for buses, a dedicated driveway for parents to drop off, even a third drop-off for kindergarten children, separate from the older children. So it has a great traffic potential there. And it also has some community features on the outside of the building, too. A full, what's called, under-12 soccer field, and then paved areas for both basketball and pickleball. And the pickleball is not really for the elementary school kids, really. It's primarily for the community use, too. So those are currently incorporated into the plan as well. If we go to the next slide, you can see a little bit more close-up of how this plan kind of does incorporate the outdoors into the school. By having these distinct wings of the building, it sort of creates and closes outdoor areas that have dedicated uses, so that there's a dedicated kindergarten play area for the younger children, another playground for the older children, a paved playground, a third one off of the gym and cafeteria, separate. And then the fourth, you might say, outdoor area is the entry plaza to the complex, too. So it reinforces what came out of that education plan, and that's one reason it was selected. And you can see the dedicated drop-off area is there as well. And then, next slide, just to mention that this project, like many school projects these days, and including the high school, will be a very green building, very environmentally-friendly, energy-efficient building, which is great for the town in the sense it will help not only with the first cost of the building, because you'll get more reimbursement from the state for being a green building, but it also, obviously, in the future, help with operating costs, because it will be so energy-efficient. It'll reduce the utility costs on an annual basis, as well as just being the right thing to do environmentally. So you can see the list there. There's a lot of attributes that support the sustainable strategies here. We have met and will continue to work with your local sustainability committee in town as well. And the building, one way to think of it is, you may have heard the term "net zero." That's a building that produces as much electricity on-site, as much energy on-site, as it consumes. We're not necessarily trying to meet that exact goal, but the building will be net-zero ready, because we're still debating and discussing how to incorporate solar panels into the building, whether the town actually owns them, or whether it's a third party. There's sort of multiple options there still to be discussed and resolved, but the building will be very energy-efficient regardless. The next slide is an exterior rendering of the entrance side of the new school. And, I'm sorry, the one with two circles there, you can barely see him, I guess, in this, but it does highlight the fact that there is a main entrance to the school on a daily basis, but to the left there, that other circle that shows up on this slide is a dedicated community entrance, so that if there's an event in the gym or the cafeteria, that can be opened up and the rest of the school can be closed off. And there will be men's and women's rooms available in that area of the building and so forth, and parking, obviously, so that the school, again, supports the community use in that regard. And then just quickly to show you, it is a three-story building. If you go to the next slide, thank you. And those blue areas are the two educational wings of the building. They stack up on each floor, so there's six of them. That matches up with the six grades in the building. So each one of those wings, kindergarten through grade five, is dedicated as a sort of classroom neighborhood. And that today includes not just what you might think of as a traditional classroom, which it does have some of those, but it also has smaller rooms, tutoring spaces, office space, boys' and girls' rooms, and some common areas, some breakout, extended learning areas outside of the classroom as well. So it's a wonderful sort of variety of resources available to every grade level in very close proximity. And in the heart of the building, sort of the central hub of this pinwheel, is that Learning Commons, the new library, which is both an open space, but it also a collaborative kind of meeting space, too, that does have computers and resources in addition to books. And the other wings of the building, one of them is the administration wing, and then the fourth is that community highlighted in yellow, which is the gym and the cafeteria. And the segregation of the grades is kindergarten and first on the first floor, and then as you progress through the building, you move up in the building. So second and third grade is on the second floor, and fourth and fifth is on the top floor. And then the plans are the next, just to show you how the wings of the building, again, the blue areas are the classroom wings, and you can see how they all radiate out in a pinwheel fashion from that Learning Commons in the center. And that is also the entrance to the building, so every day, every student passes through that space and then goes off into their distinct wing of the building. And the community, there's that dedicated community entrance by the gymnasium there. You can see the lower rectangle on the plan adjacent to the cafeteria as well. And then now to really challenge you, there is a video there. You have to go to the play mode, I think. See if you click on that. Will it run? I think, there you go. So we did a quick visualization of three-dimensional, flying around the building and then also going inside it, so you can appreciate how it sets up. And three stories is, some people think that's a little bit tall for an elementary school with little kids, and so we are careful about trying to deal with the scale of the building to make it appropriate for young children. So on the entrance side, it is just one-story high, adjacent to the gym with a porch, so it is a welcoming, sort of friendly entrance there. And then you come into, immediately adjacent to the administration area, is this Learning Commons that you enter into, which is like an atrium-like space. It has a central stair, but it is also the Library Learning Commons. Turning left, you go down this corridor to the cafeteria and the gymnasium, the community aspects of the building, as well as the student aspects. And the gym is sized large enough for adults as well, again, thinking about it being used by the community after hours. Could even be, you know, say, the junior varsity from the high school being able to use it after school for practice. This is the so-called cafitorium because it works both as an auditorium and a cafeteria in a space-saving way, and it's immediately adjacent to the playground. The stair is one of those stairs that you can sit on as well as walk on, too, so it is, again, a sort of multipurpose space. We try to get as much use out of every square foot of the building as we can to be efficient in the overall area of the building. You can see there's a lot of daylight, too. Natural light's important here. This is that makerspace, so-called STEM, S-T-E-M, room. And then this is a typical classroom neighborhood here. It's not just a parallel corridor with rooms on both sides. It is flared out a little bit with alcoves for collaboration and breakout from the classrooms, the typical classrooms here in the building, and they're at night. Thanks for taking the time. We appreciate that. We thought you deserved to sort of see what this is all about.
So I have the privilege of telling you the cost of that beautiful school. So this page reflects the budget that we submitted to the MSBA. As I mentioned, I'm very, very happy to say that they've approved it. So this was tentative, and now it is the permanent budget for the project. A couple of comments. It's a $114 million project. It's obviously, we recognize, it's expensive. Unfortunately, two or three years ago, the construction industry, like the rest of the economy, went through a pretty big spurt in inflation. Prices increased 15%. The good news is that the MSBA, just recently, in the fall, increased their grant formulas in a way that the maximum grant increased significantly from what it would have been, I'd say, a year ago had they kept those formulas. So that that 42% you see, which is the grant portion of the total project cost, actually equals the high school, even though we've gone through that inflation. So we had 42% grant on the high school, and this project will as well receive 42% grant. The big cost in there is the construction cost, obviously, at $91 million, or $92 million almost. That is based on, again, the same process we use on every project, including the high school, where we get two estimates, two independent estimates, and we reconcile them so that we know that when we finally finish the design and bid this project, that we're going to be on budget with that bid. We also include in it, obviously, the cost for fees, for architects' fees and management fees and OPM fees, as well as to fully furnish and fit out the project. And we carry contingency to make sure that we don't have to come back to the town for additional funding. So we have, again, the same contingency percentages we had at the high school, 5% for the construction contingency and 1% for the soft cost. On the right side, you can see the tax impact calculation that we have. The range was put in there, 400 to 420, because we weren't sure exactly what the MSBA was going to come back with. We are now going to tighten that range to a number, because we can do that now. But at the time this was prepared, that was the range we were using. For the average home in 2023, according to the Department of Revenue Statistics, the average valuation of $475,000 in Stoughton, that range of $400 and $420 per household is the tax impact, or about a 6% increase to the average tax bill currently in place. So I'm going to, the next slide is the slide about, we've been asked a number of occasions about what happens if it's a no vote for the project. So what we've tried to do is put down dispassionately what the repercussions that we see. Obviously, the state funding wouldn't be available with a no vote. The MSBA grant is subject to the town approving it. Related to that, on the third bullet, you see the project, if it would have to, the way that works with the MSBA is you go back in the queue, you apply again, you go through the process. They would like to make sure that the town is supportive of the project, and then, once you're submitted, you would go through this process again. In the meantime, you know, the existing buildings, as Dr. Baieda pointed out, have significant, particularly the South, have significant deferred maintenance that will require attention. They, at some point, when you do enough deferred maintenance, codes kick in that cause even more scope to be expanded, so that's generally a concern with projects that don't pass. Construction costs are escalating. They are not, fortunately, at the 10% or so that they were at a few years ago, but they're still generally considered, and it's considered to be pretty structural, given the economy and the way the construction economics works, to be about 3% to 5% moving forward. So that would continue. We did do a calculation. The MSBA requires us to look at what happens if we just renovate and bring up to code the existing two elementary schools, the Wilkins and the South, and that came to $70 million in today's dollars, which was the same share that you saw on the slide previous for this consolidated school that actually addresses 21st century education. And then, as Dr. Baieda mentioned, there is just some current overcrowding in the district that would need to be addressed through redistricting, as well as dealing with some of the changes in the district's population around special education. So we would have to look at, the town and the district would have to look at a Plan B to determine how to go about addressing those. What that would be, I think, you know, would require some more additional thought. So with that, I'll turn it back to TJ.
And Madam Chair, I'm going to close this out. In some ways, I'm both the best and the worst person to be standing in front of you and advocating for this project, because I don't have kids in the school. I never have, and I won't. But it's just important, not just for 550 to 600 kids, who will be in families that will be sending kids into the school. There's got to be more to it, in my mind, and this is why I'm glad that I'm on this committee. I really wasn't really thrilled about the idea of another building project. It's a lot of work, frankly, but it's important to the community in this respect. We can't just be building buildings at this cost for 550 students 180 days a year. It's got to mean more to the community. And I'm not just talking in the physical plant. I'm not just talking the recreational facilities, but generally. So what do I mean by that? I would be so bold as to say, many of you might disagree, I'll debate you on it every day of the week. This town generally was in a rut on capital projects until we did the high school. And I would go so far as to say that you were able to do other good things, other big things, because we were able to break through and do a good quality job on the high school. Maybe I'm wearing that as a coat of pride because I was involved in it. I'll debate anyone on that, because I remember the questions before we did the high school, and they were all these depressing questions of, oh, you're going to be over budget, and oh, why do we have to do this? We're doing big things in this town because we can do big things, and because we did a really good big thing with respect to the schools. This is the next step. It's a necessary step, because, damn it, we haven't done anything with our schools in 50 years. The last new school project that we did prior to the high school was 50 years old by the time the high school opens. This school that we're presenting to you, to the town and to town meeting, we have to guarantee the MSBA that it will have a life of 50 years. We've exceeded that with all of our other schools, so we're behind the eight ball. Now that we've done big things with respect to the high school, the town is doing things like a sewer project. That thing, that sewer project on Park Street was kicking around for 10 years before it was brought forward, presented, and put into action. This is in that area of town, which services, by my account, maybe like 3,000 or 4,000 homes. There's no recreation space on that side of the, outside of Victor and the wonderful golf course, by the way, but you have to pay to go on it. There's no recreational space serving all of those houses. The town, I know, has looked into MAPC to do some rezoning work, to get more, excuse me, to get more commercial tax impact out of that area of town. You've looked into some traffic improvements. You have a wonderful opportunity to do wonderful things in that area of town. This school will be part of that. It's part of a big mosaic of things that you're doing in that area of town. And I'll go so far as to say, it's the only place in town where we can do big things these days. There's not a hell of a lot of open space where you, we've studied it all. We had to, on both the high school project and this project. We had to look at other sites in town where we could do other big things in that respect, schools. So this is part of that. This will be a place where people in this area of town and all, you know, it'll be a place where everybody can go, but can go and recreate. Pickleball courts, we've put pickleball courts here. New rage, wonderful thing. If you told me 10 years ago that we wanted to put pickleball courts on there, I'd wonder, what the hell are you talking about? What is pickleball? But it's, these are the things that we look into right now and what we've taken advantage of. And I've heard some criticism along the way. This committee, we don't advocate for the project. What we do is present to you a solution and then defend it, because a lot of work went into it. One of the things I keep hearing is, why do we have to do that project, size-wise, configuration-wise? It's because everything lined up along the way, and nothing else, I'll suggest to you, would be approved efficiently like this one. It matches the educational plan. It matches the need for the town, and it matches, in this respect, before this board, what the town is looking for in that area of town. We present it to you, and I ask that you insert this article, because we're going to bring it before town meeting and these voters, and do a damn well, damn good job at trying to prove to them that we did ours. So any questions? So, any questions? Actually, if you could flip to the last slide, because I want to reemphasize what we're here to tonight. I don't, there should be one last one?
That's it. We didn't repeat. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, there was one last one that said, "Town meeting ballot initiative," so.
It does, it's not showing up.
What we're looking for is for you to insert the article as proposed to town meeting for approval at a special town meeting. And if, you'd have to do it under a different agenda item, I would suspect, but it doesn't require the immediacy, because you have an open town meeting warrant to close, but we do need to set a dead exclusion vote date, which we've recommended be June 4th. It meets the school calendar, meets the MSBA approval calendar, and it also, it fits within the town meeting calendar that we'd also be discussing with Mr. Mullen, who I saw in the back of the room later today. That, Madam Chair, through you to your members. We welcome any questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I'm, I'll start with Vice Chair KB.
Go around the table and off, because Steve's already on the committee.
Aha. Okay.
Start and go one by one.
Well, then, in that case, I'm going to look to my left, to Mr. Gito.
I read the presentation. I have seen it. I think I saw some of the walkthrough views on SMAC, and I, I just hope that it gets on the, on town meeting floor and we approve it. But that's just me, you know? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Mr. McCrisky.
No, Madam Chair, no questions at all. Congratulations on the work, and I think that we have a short window here to get this information to the taxpayers, and I look forward to voting for it.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. I'll go with Vice Chair KB.
So I actually do have one question and just a couple of comments. What year did the new high school come online? What was the first year that it was opened? Was it 2019?
The borrowing or the?
Oh, I mean, the doors opened, students started entering.
2019.
2019. I just want to make sure I have my year right. So first of all, I got a list here, I always forget, so I had to write it down, but I wanted to thank all the people who have worked on this. Mr. Recupero, once again, you've, I think you've done a fabulous job of, you know, herding the cats and making sure that we get all the i's dotted and t's crossed. And, you know, I think your good nature has made it always enjoyable to work with the committee, so I think it's, I thank you for that. All the members of the committee as well, for all the work that they've done. Veritex, as the owner, as project manager, has done a fabulous job, as well as DRA Architects. Just want to thank you for the work and your constant availability, you know, always there to answer questions and extraordinarily helpful. Dr. Baieda, thank you so much for your leadership in this. I know that you inherited from other superintendents this project, but you've continued to carry on the mission and also bring the resources that you needed, and for that, I'm grateful. And also, current and past members of the school committee, who have made sure that this was, continues to be a priority for the town. It just took a lot of people to build this barn, and I think it's important to thank them all. So I've got a couple places, things I want to discuss, and I'll just be very, as brief as I can, but sometimes I can't help myself. So first of all, I remember right before the high school came online, I don't, actually, it might have been, it certainly was after the vote, but it might have been before construction even started, or maybe sometime during construction. I was new to the board, and we had a presentation on the project for the select board. And I remember asking at that time, other than our current high school, what is the next youngest building? Or, you know, the next, yeah, the, sorry, other than this new high school, what's the next youngest building? And it was the Gibbons, you said that. At that point, and this was five or six years ago, I asked how old it was, and you said 47 years old. And my next question was, what's the useful life on these? 50 years, right? So we, so right now, we have all of our schools, other than our high school, have gone beyond their intended age. And that is just a reality of our situation. All of, I believe all of the schools were constructed, all within about a 10-year period, right? Which must have been, the people of the town must have been so proud to be able to accomplish that, and it was a monumental accomplishment for the town. But it does put us in a position where we can't operate under the same assumptions and the same financial situation as the US did in the 1960s. And so, besides the work that has to be done and the costs that are, the prices are much higher now, both with construction materials, our standards are also higher, so planning for, you know, compliance, for, for example, you know, ADA or this other environmental concerns that were more or less ignored at the time, so it was a little bit easier to do that. So it puts us in a pickle, where we definitely need to replace these schools. They no longer are able to serve the purpose, the purpose, the educational purposes that we need them for. Also, our purposes now are not the same as they were in the 1960s, the programming's different. And so, we, you know, I just, the scope of what this committee is trying to accomplish is tremendous. And I, it's, when you're talking about dollars and cents, it's easy to lose sight of what we're trying, what we're actually, the problem we're trying to solve. It's not going to go away. The buildings are not going to stop being difficult to maintain and expensive, and we are offering facilities for our kids that just don't live up to our own expectations of what we ought to have, I think, generally. How we resolve that is another issue. The main reason, and I asked you, though, about the year of the school, of the high school coming online, was I've been, I'm a lover of data, and I can't, I can't help but ask questions and start looking for data, and I pulled together enrollment, school enrollments for Stoughton since 2000. And you could probably go back further, but from the year 2000, every year, we've dropped, I think, on average, about 1% or 2% of our enrollment. And in the year 2019, the difference between our enrollment for 2019 versus, sorry, yeah, 2019 school year versus 2020 was a total loss of about 17%. The following year, the year the school came online, it was 19%. So it went down even further. But from there on, it starts to trend very much in the opposite direction. 2020, obviously, also being the year of COVID, I think that maybe that, you know, you can't rely on necessarily the one-to-one relationships there. But it went down to 19% and then up to 17, up to 14%. We basically gained 5% enrollment in two years with the high school coming online. And the kids that are coming into the school system are not coming into the high school. It's, there are kids coming into the high school, but they're coming into the elementary schools, because the school itself is a draw for, for parents and people who want to live in our community, and want their kids to have the best facilities available to them. With new buildings, with a new South school, I imagine we would have a similar spike in enrollment, as just being a community that's, that takes education seriously and is willing to invest in it. I very much support this project, and I'm glad that we're able to get it to where it is right now. I would love for, what should I say? It's not without its problems. We can't, we are all very sober here about the fact that this, the money does not grow on trees, and we have to find a way to figure this out. However, I think bringing it to town meeting, to offer them an opportunity to understand this issue and to ultimately weigh in on what our next steps are, is critical. I think this is the time to do it, and I thank you so much for bringing this to us.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair KB. Mr. Carrara.
One of my main reasons for getting reelected in '21, I served nine years prior from 2000 to 2009. One of the reasons to get back on was a fire station building, in that the residents in the South school area deserved a new school. Never in my mind did I ever envision this kind of money. I thought we'd look at a school. I asked if there was another way to look at it. Evidently, I don't understand education or something, as well as other people, but my ideas went deaf. The money that's to refurb the schools, which is ridiculous, and you add it together, and it, amazingly, it's more than this building. If we had done one school, MSBA wouldn't say no to you on money. They'd give you money, maybe not 42%, they might give you 28, and the town could afford it. I don't know if this town can afford this. We got, we're always talking about a geriatric population that we have, that we have people that are retiring, it's getting a bigger, bigger area. What are we going to do? Tell them to sell their houses and move into all the promised, you know, elderly that we're going to get? I don't know what's going to happen. This is wicked, wicked serious. And what's going to be the result with the West School when we put this? Where is that going to be in the factor? Is it going to be reused as something else? Because a prior superintendent told us, don't worry, when this gets together, we're going to have schools offline, it's going to save so much. I don't see it. I see the West School being used. I don't know what's going to happen to the South. In my eyes, it should be torn down, because it won't be outfitted for anything, but these are questions that are never, never talked about. I have to ask them, because I want answers to them. Just hold on one second. The reason why the high school took off and everybody got on board, everybody was running around, oh, we need a new high school, we need a new high school. Know what happened there? Mrs. Carrara said to Deborah Sauvigny, if you want people to know why you need a new high school, take them for a walk through the building and let them see it. The 168 town meeting reps, everybody took a walk through that building, and they were mortified. I was too. I couldn't believe it. That's what sold me then. This is what sold me to get back on the board, to get a South school. I watched stuff in Brockton, I was on a couple of sites in Brockton, I saw those schools go up. They were geared for the areas. I just, I just don't, I don't know how these people, I'm not saying no to this, I'm just saying, I don't know how these people are going to take it or be sold this. And you've got timelines down here that the public is not, never going to be able to be brought up to speed and fast for these votes that are going to come through, that you want dead exclusion vote on, in May. I don't know how that's, how that's going to come to fruition. That's going to be your way of selling it. There's another scary thing that bothers me about the location and how it's laid out. We live in a, I don't want to bring this up, I don't want to scare anybody, but I want you to face reality. It's one way in. It's in a reclusive area. Alls it takes is one vehicle across that road and an idiot to do something wrong, and there's going to be problems, because that's the world we live in. And that's, it's weird, that, it just struck me, it hit me hard that when I saw that one way in, and the access road is, I don't even know if you can do it, because it's so wet through there. I know that property, I've hunted on that property. It's bad in a couple of places. And that road, there's a little bit of lines missing on floodplain and water that's there. I just think we got to let the public know what they're going to be, what they're going to be, it looks good on paper, I love the video, everything looked good. Do you remember when they did the middle school? They said the kids were going to be kept separate, everything was going to be separate. Don't know sixth graders here, seventh, everybody was separate. Now we're talking about a school that everybody's going to be like a family, intermingle here and here and here. I couldn't even, I didn't even know where the hallways were when I looked at the pinwheel, and it showed the blue area. I couldn't find the hallways. I was looking, I'm like, where's the hallways? It looked so jammed in. I don't know. It's, I'm not, I'm just, these are concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Carrara. Did you?
Joe, Joe, please.
I'm happy to speak to Madam Chair.
Yes, yes, Doctor, please.
To Scott and the members of the board. First of all, I think some of your point, some of the points that you make are relevant and important to discuss. Let me start with, since I've been on board, the amount of meetings that have been open to the public, the amount of flyers that we put out, the number, there, it's a different love when you build in an elementary school, because most elementary schools are within a district area, not within, everybody goes to that place, right? It's a harder sell, there's no doubt about that. The issue here that we tried to do, as I came on board, that I appreciated, and not to get personal, both as a taxpayer and as the superintendent, is the long-term planning that this allows, and I want to speak directly to your comment about the Wilkins. So we have a subcommittee currently working to try to say to, prior to town meeting or about town meeting, the best interests of what is going to happen to the South, the Jones and the Wilkins. Part of the plan right now, it's a decision of the school committee, not mine, so I want to go on record, it's a decision of the school committee, is the potential that the Wilkins will become the preschool center, which is what houses the current Jones, plus the administration. So we would be moving preschool to the Wilkins. That's one idea. Why? We have spent money on the Wilkins beyond life expectancy. The new bathrooms, windows, as just examples, which we've also done at other elementary schools, which we didn't do at the South. The second would be the big question of the South. This project currently does not include, because MSBA doesn't typically reimburse on a project like it did at the high school, with the idea of the tier down. So that's a big question mark. As the superintendent of schools, I can't tell you that I'm a big fan of selling that for more development and more housing, because I have an enrollment problem already. So I'm just on the record as the superintendent saying that. And our forecast, as you saw from the NESDEX study that I believe I shared through Tom and through you potentially, if you haven't, I'm happy to give it to you, is that we're going to be at 41 to 4200 students by 2031, I believe. Our high school is slated to be at 1,400 students by 2031, '32. It's built for 1,080. And we all know that we tried to push making it bigger, and MSBA just won't do it. They just won't do it. They use very conservative numbers. That said, then it becomes, what do we do with the Jones? And that's a big question mark of my doing one of two things. I'm either utilizing that for alternative education, a significant need within the school district, because we're sending kids out of district at incredible amounts of money. And two, the South issue of what do we do with it? In my opinion, it is really taking a hard look at closing it and taking it down. That's only my opinion, and I, again, don't make that decision, but if the idea, long term, is that the bones and structures of the DAW and the Gibbons are awesome, they are solid, and they, right now, if MSBA came in, they would be saying, this is an ad renovation at best. Neither of those two schools, in the last walkthrough by MSBA, even, they won't even look at it. The Jones school is not looked at, because it's a preschool, and preschools are not part of K-12. So that's the reason why you don't get MSBA typically involved with that, and they don't build preschools or reimburse. On the issue of, so there's the potential that the district, over the next few years, is not closing just one school, but potentially two. That could happen. Why? Because we don't want to continue to build brand-new elementary schools. That's not where the future is. Matter of fact, if you look at the MSBA list... not where the future is. Matter of fact, if you look at the MSBA list of projects, it's predominantly consolidation. The building of 300, 300 student buildings is not at the top of their list. Dollar for dollar, it's, it's a, it's a better purchase, if you will, better expense. In terms of, and I'm not, I don't hunt for the record, but I'm happy to come over if you do hunt. I don't, so I don't know the property like you do as a hunter being back there. But I can say that the biggest thing that I asked our police chief and fire chief for was that I would not support a building that didn't at least have an accessway out. We tried very hard as a committee, especially the gentleman to my right, to take and go cross Fano to Sumner. But we could not come to the taxpayers for the price that was being asked. I'll just leave it at that. It was months of discussions, and we just couldn't get there. And that's when we also had to make a fiscal decision that we couldn't continue to just spend money on plans. We needed to make a decision on the plan. So we went to the access road because we knew that that road could not be anything except an emergency road, but that we would have at least an emergency road and a main entrance. I, I came on in July, and I think at the meeting, the first thing I said is I want Fano Drive for two reasons. I know where the fire station is being built, right? Like it or not, you know, all the stuff that goes with that, I'm, I'm a supporter. But that said, that comes out of there and it has to cross over to Sumner. It could potentially just be coming down Fano Drive. And I know some people disagree with that. But in my head, I was thinking, how do we connect the two sides of town public safety-wise as well? Because I, I live in the town. But that couldn't happen at the price that was being asked. I mean, we would have been laughed out of this room for the price that is being asked, for, for what we would have to do with it, which is basically expanded with all of that language that you know, Scott, that I don't know with roadwork and water this and water that, that I, I don't even understand. I won't plan to understand. So that's why we went with the access road idea. And we never discussed that the access road should be a regular road because we don't think that going on to that, was it Haynes? Is even conditional. Plus, coming out of that road back onto Park would be even more of a problem because of that turn and the, the potential connection to public safety as well. And then the last part from, from this perspective is once we, once we knew that Fano wasn't an option, then it became, how do we make sure that, bless you, that we're also making sure that exiting out of that building and coming into that building is as safe as possible? So there is, MassDOT is involved, you know, that whole process of taking a look at lighting and any of that is going to have to be discussed. And that's their decision because as you know, that's, that's a state road that the town of Stoughton doesn't control. But the plan here is to take away public school buildings and not have this, the continuation of building after building and building and keeping them. We don't have a choice right now with the Wilkins because it is our own core place where potentially the Jones could go, again, pending a vote. The Jones then becomes the next big discussion. The South, I think, is, the discussion will be that in 2007, it was decided by the feasibility master committee, which included at the time members of the school, school, school committee, school board, excuse me, select board and townspeople, towns, town meeting reps, I should say, that the South School was safety and health only. We are not putting any more money into it because it's going to go forward. And then, as you know, the high school project came forward.
Thank you, Joe. I, I appreciate that, Superintendent. It's just, these questions are the ones I wanted to get out there so that people would know how other people felt that speak to us. And everybody's afraid of the, the cost because you got a fire station coming on. We still have a high school on. Now this is coming on. And everybody keeps going, "The master plan, the master plan." The master plan's a guideline. It's a guideline. You can bring something else on in a minute and put it in, ahead of three schools because somebody said, "That's great. Let's, let's run the sewer the rest of the way to Brockton down in an empty car for 15 million when it could be spent, say, school side." You know what I mean? Things get shifted.
I understand. I would, I would offer to you and anyone that's hearing me tonight that if you walked to the South School, you'll come to a very easy conclusion. If you walk the Wilkins School, you will say, "Hm, yeah, I can see this being used long-term with very limited expense."
But that's the-
And potentially an accelerated MSBA project.
Those, those were the questions I got. What, what are they going to do at the South?
Yeah, we will come, we'll be coming out with some statements on that sooner than later.
I'm just saying that I'm sitting here now. I, I, I wanted to clarify in my head so I knew I had answers to. But I appreciate the hard work. I made my, my ideas put forth. You know the other reasons why things have to be put together. And I guess we'll just wait and see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. And thank you, guests, for answering the questions. For me, I want the best for our students. I want the best for our town. My oldest son went to the South School, so I know personally that it is in great need of some action, and action now. But I was kind of caught off guard because I didn't have the true process of how we vet through a project. And that is, we start by giving the financials of the various options. I didn't get a chance to see that, and those are the options. What is the true analysis that went through, you know, weeding out? Like, what is the, the cost for, you know, the detailed cost for building, rebuilding the South School, building, rebuilding the Wilkins, and then combining? So then you can say, "Oh, okay, that's what happened. That's, that's the, the process." And you came to a conclusion because you just presented the end results, your final option, which is, seems to be a good option, but I really don't know because I didn't go through the whole process with you. The other piece of the, of the puzzle for me is we didn't get a chance to see from a financial impact of how it's going to impact our budget, our bond rating, just because we are trying to build or rehab, not build new, but rehab the police station. So how does all of that fit together to me? And we have our financial meeting with our financial consultant on April 9. But I believe tonight is the night we have to make the decision, right? So I don't have the luxury of going through what makes sense for me as a finance professional. But I know the South School needs action now. And with your timeline and the way you expressed to me, "Well, if we don't make a decision now, then it, it may delay a new school or complex until, you know, another 10 or 20 years down the road." Now, do I want to do that? I would say, no. Time is of the essence to make a decision. I want the best for the town. I want the best for our students. The other piece is, you know, I'm from Missouri. I'm from the show-me state. Can you please show, as you go through your, your hearings, your public hearings, how you got to this decision? You know, you said $35.7 million for the school as the base repairs, $35.4 million base repairs for the Wilkins. Okay, how did you get to that? And then we have the total, the total number. Just the analysis, please, would be helpful to me. And then before you respond, Attorney Recupero, I respect you tremendously. But I want to turn to our town council attorney, Winner. Do we have to make a decision tonight? Because we're going to close the warrant tonight. So we have to make a decision to insert this tonight, correct?
So, Madam Chair, the decision you have to make tonight is only whether or not call for the special town meeting, insert any articles that are appropriate to do so, and to close the warrant. Whatever position the board may or may not have on the article is not a question before the board tonight, just whether or not to insert it as a procedural matter. So I, I'm just teasing apart kind of two related concepts.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you for that tease, seeing out. Thank you. Thank you. Attorney Recupero, thank you for your response.
I don't want to step on, actually, Attorney Winner beat me to it. All we're asking for tonight is for you to insert the article into the warrant and set a dead exclusion date, which won't happen if town meeting doesn't vote for it anyway. So beyond that, I mean, we've laid out this whole process along the way. As, as Mr. Bonfari has said, we have nine, we've had 19 meetings and public forums combined.
19 building committee meetings, five public forums.
19 building committee meetings, five public forums, and we've had more. And along the way, when we had to window it down from, you know, a project of a single building versus consolidated building, a base repair. In the process, that, that happened very early on. So we went through, well, about three or four months into it, if I remember correctly. So, you know, all of that was discussed during the public forums. We didn't come before you and present it. But we can certainly lay that out in a, in a written form and present it to you after the fact. Again, for tonight's purposes, we're just looking for insertion.
I would be completely satisfied with that, Attorney. Thank you very much.
We can do that.
If anyone is willing to take the vote now on the, the options that Attorney Winner teased out for us that we have to do tonight, in the essence of time, I'm prepared to do that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Vice Chair Kayvey.
Yeah, I apologize. There's one thing I just want to, want to add is that, that this is all very helpful information to have. And certainly, you know, we'll have a role, we, and we have a role in this. But the, you know, examining the merits of a school articles has not really been a practice for the select board typically. Like, if, when you get an article, they want to replace windows. We don't ask them, "Can you prove it? How much is it going to cost?" Typically, we, our president has been to insert articles from the schools where the school committee has, has vetted the projects themselves. And, and I think breaking that precedent would be, you know, maybe just because I, I wanted to move forward, but I think it's an unhealthy precedent to set. In the past, I think there were issues similar to this that arose where the select boards of past had not inserted articles, that they, they wanted more information on. And that led to the schools inserting articles via petitioned articles, which puts the whole town at a, at a, at risk, I think. I think it is important that, that we go through a, a process where it goes in. I think the courtesy of inserting articles requested by the schools is, is the precedent we have, and I think a healthy one. So I'd recommend, even though it's, it's definitely helpful to get the insight and to, to debate the merits of it, I think that that, that it falls outside of our jurisdiction in this case.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Kayvey. However, I agree with parts of what you said about President, but we are one town. And I think it is fair to say that we work together collaboratively because we are, after you, okay, Mr. Carrera is after me, because we do. And we've proven that we work collaboratively with the school. You know, asking for information is not a bad thing. You know, it's not like, "Ah, we can't do it." It's, can, can we just understand? Can we wrap our arms around it and, and we can move forward? We'll probably come to the same conclusion that you did, and you've had all of the information sessions. But we get this too. We get it on when we have large projects and we have citizens saying to us, you know, we have a bucket or a group of citizens that say, "Oh, no matter what, yeah, do it because we want to progress the town." We have the body of citizens to say, "Well, as long as you can help us understand, we're ready to move forward." Then we're all, then we have the final bucket or group of citizens that say, "No way. We like things the way they are." But typically, we come together because we're working collaboratively, and we are logical people. And I remember what I said when I first started talking. It was, "I want the best for our students, and I want the best for the town. But we have to make a decision." I ask for information, and attorney says, "I'll get you the information." And my immediate response was, "I am good with that." That's it.
So.
Thank you. I think Mr. Carrera had a comment.
If, I think if we're going to vote tonight and we vote to insert, we're voting to insert, I don't think we should piggyback the date of the supposed dead exclusion be included unless town meeting passes, then they come to the Board of Selectmen for us to set that. I don't want I, my hands tied to an article if we're the ones who have to set the date. They're not setting the date. We are. So I'm not having a two-move. You can have the vote tonight to get it in, but you don't have the vote to have the number on when the, when the, and I know Brian's shaking his head because he knows him right.
We agree with that, unless you absolutely need that date today.
It's two moves and one thing.
It's two moves.
No, actually, it's one move. All I was asking for was insertion, and I suggested to you that you should identify that date. And, look, there's a reason why I included that second part. We only recommend things. We don't request anything. We don't demand that you do anything. We only recommend things. So if you're going to, and I would recommend that this come up earlier in town meeting, but we can't control that either. There's a certain uptime, lead time, I should say, between when the town meeting votes and when it has to go on a ballot. If you do it in early June, and I know that we did this in the high school, if you do it in early June, that leaves the end of the school year, school graduation. If you go late in June, you're into the holidays, the July 4th holiday. People go on vacation. If you go any further than that, you're into the fall. You're in a presidential cycle. We identified that based on a number of different considerations. It's a recommendation. You don't have to get angry at me.
I'm not angry.
I suggest it. It's a recommendation, Scott.
It's a suggestion. It's a recommendation. But the vote of the board, it's a separate item.
Insertion is all we're looking for.
That's right.
All we're looking for.
Excuse me, would, I'll further do. I wanted to recognize our town clerk. She's had her hand held for some time, and she is an officer of the town.
Do you want a microphone here?
Yeah.
Your stuff, you can say.
I like what I have to say.
Hello, Mrs. Carrera, and welcome. What's going on?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I need to bring something to the board's attention. I know that the, Mr. Recupero is talking about a dead exclusion and a vote and having, I'm assuming, a special election for this question.
Yes.
However, if we remember correctly, after April 2nd, we will not have voting machines. So we may not make that date. As we, I already sent this documentation in that the Board of Selectmen voted to end the use of Accu-Votes at the end of April. Then we have to, we're ordering the new machines, and I do not know when they will be in as of yet because I'm waiting to get the account number so I can put in my requisition for it. So that might be a delay. And as Mr. Recupero said, we will be getting into the presidential year. So I was not aware that, that this would be brought up and, and put into the special town meeting article until recently. So I wanted to bring that to the board's attention because that could cause some problems, especially where I've already notified the state and sent in the documentation so that they know that we're not going to be using the Accu-Votes and that we'll be using the DS200s.
Thank you very much for raising your hand and providing that additional information. That's a must for us to know that information. That's a must for us to know that information. So that goes back to what Mr. Carrara said, is not a, we should not answer that question about the date tonight because we just don't know. But Vice Chair Kayvey, go.
I'm really, just filling in, I agree with everything you've just said. It sounds like there's a couple of things we have to tackle before we can come up with a date. I know also, if, I mean, we can't wait until after town meeting votes because we have to print ballots, right? So we have like a window that we've got to figure out between now and town meeting when the best date would be. And we've got some time to figure that out, and maybe we just address it in early April and try to nail down a date that works for everybody. You also have to advertise it. We have to let people know there's going to be an election. So going from May into the first week of June is tight, a tight squeeze. It might be a necessary one, but we need to have, need to have machines, you know, in order to do it, so.
And through you, Madam Chair, if I could speak to the town manager, I'd like to talk to you privately about budgetary items because it'll cost additional funds that I didn't plan for, and I would like to come up with a plan for you if we're going to have a special election. Thank you.
So, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Anything else, Mrs. Carrara?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Gito.
I want to make sure that we are able to have an election. If we need to borrow voting machines or rent them from someone, we need to do that. I mean, the idea of not being able to move ahead with a vote that is going to bring in potentially $42 million because of this situation is absolutely absurd. And we need to deal with this, and I would suggest that we know by the end of the week what is going to happen and execute on the basis of that. Thank you.
Yeah. So the one thing that's urgent tonight, Attorney Winner, is...
Item 10 on your agenda.
Item number 10 on the agenda, right.
Could we take that out of order?
So, yes. So thank you very much for your presentation. Item number 10 is...
Madam Chair, if I could just address through you Mr. Gito's concerns, I will look into that, what you're suggesting.
My concern may not be the right answer, but there has to be an answer, and we don't have to have a discussion about that. I would suggest that the town manager come back to us with a solution. That's all I'm suggesting. Don't need to talk about it anymore.
I was just letting you know that I would look into it for you.
No.
Please go through the town manager. You did good, Stephanie, I mean, Mrs. Carrara, you did good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you. Moving right along to item number 10, I will take things out of order, and item number 10 is to insert the article and to close it.
In May.
I'm sorry, Attorney Winner, go ahead.
If you're so willing, I'd like to just offer a couple of comments before you begin because there's a few things that you need to do within item 10.
Thank you.
So I think we discussed or alluded to briefly a week ago the date for a special town meeting, so you're going to need to determine a date. So 42 days from today is your earliest possible opportunity. I think that puts you at April 30th. So that gives you, of course, all, all the options are on the table for that at this point. Second, you're going to have to insert the articles into the special town meeting warrant. You have two. Not just this one, there's a petitioned article that you need to discuss. Second, or third, excuse me, you close the warrant when you're done with that discussion. So after you, you know, have a debate or conversation between the board members, those are the three things that we're going to need to see in a motion. Set the date, insert up to two articles, and then close the warrant.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Vice Chair Kayvey.
I move that we set the day for this special town meeting to be May 6th, which is the first night of town meeting. And then we insert both articles that are available to us to insert, the new elementary school building project, debt exclusion, and also there's a petitioned article to insert the petitioned article as well.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Gito.
Yeah, and then the next, the next motion would be to close it.
So the motion was made and was seconded, discussion. I have a discussion question. For that citizen's petition, what is the governance or ruling on that? I'm directing that question to Attorney Winner.
So I can interpret that a couple of different ways. One, is it a proper petitioned article for a special town meeting before the board this evening? And that's really the role of the town clerk in my understanding, she's here to correct me if I misstate this, is that the number of signatures were certified.
Yes.
It's been transferred therefore officially from the town clerk's office to this board.
Yes.
So you have a proper petitioned article in front of you. The second part of that is whether or not this board has any sort of leeway or discretion in whether or not to insert a petitioned article for the special town meeting. And let me answer that kind of two statements. One is that there's a clear statutory and charter mandate by statute. It's Chapter 39, Section 10 of the General Laws, and under your charter, you've got Section 7.1, which both state clearly that it's a shall, that the board shall insert a properly petitioned article. So in the weight of that, there is a, you call that sort of a mountain of evidence, there's a pebble of evidence on the other side, a sliver, suggesting that that right is not absolute, that there are some very narrow and limited exceptions where the board may exercise some discretion. If those aren't invoked, though, if those aren't triggered, then it is a shall. And so my opinion to the board is that when you're faced with a properly petitioned article with nearly, what was it, 280-something signatures, I believe, that the board has an obligation to insert that.
Someone was talking in the audience, I didn't hear, he said...
That the board has an obligation to insert that in the absence of very extraordinary circumstances that I don't think are present here.
Mr. Gito, I didn't see a green light come on, so I didn't...
It's on now. I think we just ought to vote on this and then move on. I mean, unless anybody has any real objections to it.
Nope. So, motion?
Well, I would call a question if you'd like. I mean, but I don't think that, if I need to call a question, let's call a question. There you go.
I'll second that.
Okay. Well, in favor, aye?
We're voting on the motion that was seconded. Oh, sorry about that. So the motion, all in favor, want to do roll call vote? That's on the date, that's on the two articles inserted, and then to close.
Have them done their votes.
Okay.
This is a separate vote.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye as well. Okay?
Motion to close the special town meeting warrant?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, and I vote aye as well, unanimous decision. So that takes care of item number 10 to close the warrant, and that, so we can move on to the next item, which is item number nine, the Lucius Clapp Memorial Building contract Mr. McCrisky.
Madam Chair, I move the renewed lease as printed.
Any discussions on the renewal lease as printed?
What, what was that?
Any, the motion was to, I know we can't hear a lot when there's no, right. So, Mr. McCrisky?
I made the motion. I made the motion as printed, submitted.
Okay, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, Mr. Gito. Okay, it was unanimous decision. Moving on to our consent agenda, this is number 11, Consent Agenda 11A, Approval of Open Session Minutes Meeting of February 20th, 2024, March 5th, 2024, and March 12th, 2024. 11B is Road Race Application, 12, Narragansett Summer Running Festival on July 14th, 2024, and 11C, Road Race Application, Memorial Day Parade on May 27th, 2024. Does anyone want to pull any of those items for discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gito.
I had looked at one on the...
Please use the mic.
Yeah. I had looked at one of the minutes.
Yes.
Set of minutes.
Yes.
And for the life of me, unless I can find it, I can't seem to locate. And I had it here, no, I don't need, yeah, I do need that, maybe that's what I need.
Can you tell me what it's in reference to?
It was, it was relating to the actions that were, that the town manager had talked about on, oh, here it is, the March 5th meeting.
March 5th?
Yeah.
Okay.
On page two of that, in the last paragraph, the town manager had talked about the downtown area and talked about the post office. And he said, please, he said that he had initiated discussion on the post office properties because of former Boston mayor Marty Walsh was now on the U.S. Post Office Board of Directors, and he and Congressman Lynch could work together to see if the postal service is now entrusted in moving at least a part of the operation off the property, given that the distribution is expanding out of the Randolph facility. I believe that was pretty much what you said.
Yes, sir.
And I would like that added to the, to the minutes because I think it's important. And it was said.
That's your motion?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favors?
Aye.
Yes.
With the amended language?
Right.
And it's, motion was made, it was seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. We're moving right along to...
Madam Chair?
Yes, Vice.
I make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
I make a motion that the select board transfer $430,000 from the MWRA Capital Infrastructure Fund to the Water Enterprise Fund to supplement fiscal 2025 revenues in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 106, the Acts of 2006, as amended by Chapter 21 of the Acts of 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Madam Chair, make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Good evening, everyone, and we'll see you next time. Thank you.
Beginning of the meeting.